Meeting will please come to order. This is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and thank you for joining us. As I said, this is a regular meeting of the Board of Trustees of the Village of Willmet. We'll call the matters in the order in which they appear on the printed agenda, and there are copies of the agenda on the table by the door, so you may want to take a copy so you can follow along, see when your matter will be called. If you plan to address us tonight, we ask that you please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone, and tell us who you are and where you live, as that may be relevant to the matter at hand. We ask that you speak clearly into the microphone so we can hear you, because everything you say and everything we say is being recorded. And from those recordings, minutes of the meeting are prepared, and these minutes are available at Village Hall and also on our website at willmet.com. And I will note, for some of the taller people in the audience, not a problem than I have, you may have to lean into the microphone for us to hear you. Our Village Board meetings are televised on local access Channel 6 and on the Internet, and if you look up, you can actually see the cameras that are televising. The little red dot means that that camera's active. By televising our meetings, we make it easy for our neighbors in the community to follow the proceedings of the Village Board, see the types of matters that come before us, the questions that we ask, and the policies we create. You can find archived videos of Village Board and other local government meetings on our website. And I'd like to personally thank all residents of Willmet who regularly tune into Channel 6 and pay attention to the workings of their local government. Now, before each meeting, the Board receives a packet of agenda materials, and these same materials are posted on willmet.com on the Friday before our meeting, so that residents and other interested parties can review the very same materials that the Board members received. This week's packet was pretty big. It contained 893 pages. We've had the opportunity to review all that information in the agenda pack, so if you do plan to address us tonight, we ask that you focus your remarks and tell us the most relevant, most material, the important points you'd like us to focus on as well. Finally, we are a community of neighbors, and as such, we'd like our meetings to be as civil and courteous as possible. So as a courtesy to those around you, please take this time to turn off your cell phones and other devices. And while we are turning off our phones, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Trustee Wolf?
Here.
Trustee Sullivan?
Here.
Trustee Plunkett?
Here.
Trustee Dodd?
Here.
Trustee Kersman?
Here.
Trustee Pierce?
Here.
President Blinsky?
Here.
We're all here, so obviously, we have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is Item 2, Public Comment. We have a very heavy agenda tonight. We started the meeting 30 minutes early, or almost 30 minutes early, to accommodate that, so I'm going to defer Item 2, Public Comment, to the end of the meeting, since it relates only to items which are not on tonight's agenda. So we'll move on to Item 3, which is the Consent Agenda. As described on the printed agenda, items which are routine business that are not normally debated by the Village Board are placed on the Consent Agenda. And all items beginning with the Item 3 are on the Consent Agenda, starting on Page 1 with Item 3.1, all the items on Page 2, and then about half the items on Page 3, ending with Item 3.1.6, which I think in the initial draft of the agenda was labeled 3.1.5, but it is 3.1.6. So items on the Consent Agenda are up for approval tonight. If an item is not removed by a member of the audience and is not removed by one of the trustees, it will be approved and it will not be discussed. So let me begin by asking, is there any member of the audience who would like to remove an item from the Consent Agenda? May I see a show of hands? Okay, moving on, are there any items that any of the trustees would like to remove? Okay. May I have a motion to adopt the Consent Agenda?
Removed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion to adopt the Consent Agenda.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye.
So the motion carries, the Consent Agenda has been adopted. If you are here for an item on the Consent Agenda, it's been approved. And I will clarify for people tonight, although it looks like the numbers haven't changed the numbers, okay. The following items were approved: Land Use Items 3.2, 3.3, 3.4, and 3.5. 3.5 and 3.6 actually should be under the Administration Committee, but those were all approved. 3.7, 3.9, 3.10, and 3.11. So all of those items were just approved. If you're here for one of those items, there will be no further discussion of any of those items or any of the other items on the Consent Agenda. You are free to leave, of course, more than welcome to stay. But as I say in every meeting, I don't see anybody leaving, but if anybody does leave after I finish talking, it is early, there's plenty of time to stop by one of our restaurants downtown before you head home. Everybody laughs, but I'm serious, and I say it every meeting, so. All right, we'll move on to the Report of Officers, and the first item is Item 4.1, Introduction of Richard Daskid, who is recommended for appointment to the Historic Preservation Commission. Would you please come up? Is he here? Yeah, there he is. Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
Would you take a moment to introduce yourself? Thank you first for volunteering. Your background is really excellent. Would you just take a few minutes or a minute and introduce yourself to the trustees? That would be great.
Be happy to. I am a 22-year Willmet resident. I am an architect, and licensed in three states. I have had a very long history in historic preservation, having been on the historic preserv-- been a member of the Historic Pullman Foundation in supporting their ongoing activities since the 1980s, all the way through to the great landmark status that we received a year and a half ago with President Obama signing of that legislation. There's enjoyed being in Willmet so much over the years for its very interesting history that goes back to the founding of Willmet, and look forward to working with the village.
Any questions? Again, thank you so much for volunteering. You're going to be a great addition to the Historic Preservation Commission, and the way it works, I believe you were just recommended tonight, so at the next meeting, your appointment will be approved, and then you're a member.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Next item is Item 4.2, Presentation of the Willmetanomics Marketing Campaign. I had to practice that. So I believe Representatives from the Chamber are going to make this presentation.
I just very quickly wanted to introduce and thank two amazing Willmet residents and business owners, Heather Heeman and Ann Kelly, who have donated hundreds, literally, of hours to this effort. They're very, very special, and they're going to present to you about the campaign. Thank you.
Okay, so we have-- can you hear me?
Yeah, would you introduce yourself again for the record?
Sure. My name is Heather Heeman, and I live in Willmet.
Ann Kelly, also live in Willmet.
Yeah, so I'm going to do the first half, she'll do the second half. We have 10 minutes, we promised we won't go over. A little bit of background, there was a committee that was formed in 2016 that was meant to help with the marketing of all Village businesses. Through a series of brainstorming and focus groups, we developed a master marketing plan, and the idea was to translate the love that the residents have for their community to the local businesses, because you regularly hear people say, "I love my neighborhood, I love my school, I love the park districts," and we realized there was a little bit of a disconnect, and we wanted to make sure that people were sharing that passion with the local businesses as well. So we decided to use a grassroots marketing effort and execution, the idea being to educate residents and create a movement. We wanted them to rally behind us and say, "You know what? I'm going to shop Willmet, not just because I love my community, but because it's a way that I can support my community as well." And there were a couple reasons that we chose this format. One, simply is limited funding. I mean, we're not a big giant brand with a lot of funding, and so it was a way to minimize costs of both creating advertising and then actually producing it. And more than anything, we need the residents themselves to embrace this. We need them to be the ones who come forth and say, "You know what? I want to be the person to shop Willmet." So this is meant to be that type of education and empowerment. The final endeavor has been thousands of hours, quite honestly, of a myriad of volunteers, and it's 100% volunteer effort, but those volunteers are professional volunteers, so we have volunteers that, you know, do this for a living, and they've volunteered their efforts. We conducted focus groups, ran brainstorming sessions, created a marketing plan, produced creative, executed a marketing-- a media plan, which we're in the process of doing, and then we're running social media and creating publicity. This is just launching, and Ann is going to get into some of the specifics. One keynote is our volunteer creatives, who are from Olivian Mather, really challenged us to come up with a tangible reason why people would want to shop Willmet. And we were able, with the help of people in the village, to identify the 2%, the 2% return on every dollar you spend locally gets put back into the village. And giving that tangible number to people really became the crux of our marketing campaign. We conducted Phase 1, which was to educate consumers about Willmetanomics, and hopefully you've seen this, because it's right outside in the village. Every dollar you spend locally adds up to a better Willmet. That's Willmetanomics. And then the tagline there is, "It pays to shop locally." There are three executions in this beginning area, and this was meant to see the idea, get people interested, and begin to educate them. Then we want to take Willmetanomics and the definition of it a step farther. What does this 2% actually do for me as a resident? Well, it keeps you safe with the Fire and Police Department. It provides services like trash and recycling. It allows special events like holiday lights and seasonal concerts. I mean, there are so many things. So we took that $5.9 million and told people-- are telling people what they are actually getting with that money. And that brings us to the Phase 2 Creative, which you will see in the Beacon this week. We'll have four consecutive pages, and then each week we'll have some more. This is an example, "Buying sports gear on Green Bay adds up to nicer park benches." That's Willmetanomics. You probably can't read that small print at the bottom. It says, "Millions of dollars of local sales are reinvested back into Willmet, making it one of the most special places on the North Shore. Remember, it pays to shop locally." So we have many executions that feature a variety of business areas, and Ann's going to take you through some of the specifics now.
So to talk about the campaign launch and execution, the people that we want to reach are the Willmet residents, to get them to be active with local businesses. And so to do that, we kind of did sort of a blitz around town during Summer Fest was our first phase launch, because that's one of our most well-attended events that we have in town. So we have 24 yard signs that hopefully everybody has seen around town, around the Village Center. We have a second wave of them that are kind of going in the outlying areas a little bit. We had Beacon ads during-- right after Summer Fest, after we introduced the first creative, and a couple weeks after, as Heather said, we have-- keep a lookout this week, we have four consecutive ads in the Beacon, which will be a big splash, and that is introducing the new creative. We printed 120 posters with the creative. We handed them out to local businesses, and not only we do that, but we brought a letter to them and handed it to them to educate the business owners on what this campaign is about, to get them excited about it, to get them educated about it, and to get them to help us go viral, because it's a grassroots campaign, so the more people they talk to, the more it's going to spread. And so that was the letters that we passed out to them. Social media, we have hashtag Willmetanomics, which we've put on. Willmet Biz has been great about supporting that. We've sent that to the businesses. It's been on the Discover Willmet Facebook page. We're going to have our own Facebook page, and we just launched the Instagram page, so look for that. There has been one Beacon article so far about the campaign right around Summer Fest, and there's another article that is really going to be focusing on the creative volunteers, and that's going to come in early September. We also are going to do kind of a business owner training session in September, early October, to get them to talk about it more and get it to continue to spread. We will have promotional items like car magnets and stickers and other things that we're talking about. So hopefully, you've all seen this around town, you will see more of them. Each of the items that is in the creative is from a local store and was shot by a local photographer. So we really wanted to display those in all the windows. Those are our-- that's our creative team. Upcoming, this is, again, an ongoing execution. It will continue into the holidays with an iteration, you know, geared towards holidays, so the momentum will continue to build. So far, we have had great feedback from the businesses, from residents. We've had some testimonials where, you know, Valley Lodge told us that somebody just called in and booked a private room the other day for a party because of the campaign. They made sure that they kept it local in Willmet. So how can you help? How can everyone help? Support Willmetanomics campaign by liking and sharing it on Instagram, Facebook. Take a photo of yourself with a poster or a yard sign or in a shop. Some people have been checking in and using the hashtag. Tell people about it, write a letter to the editor. You know, any other ideas that you have, certainly reach out to us and let us know how you think that you can help us spread the word. And that's it. I do.
Any--
So thank you so much for listening. Any questions on the campaign?
Guys, we're like right on time, too. That's great.
All right. Not going to get the hug.
Any questions from the trustees?
No, this is phenomenal. It's really, it's really great.
Thanks.
Well, and it is one of the wonderful things about our community, that we have a community full of people that not only have talents, but that are willing to share them with each other, and whether it's the Boards and Commission or, you know, this marketing group, which, you know, the Chamber and the Village sort of put it together, but frankly, the amorphous Village and the amorphous Chamber didn't do the work. It was all the volunteers, who are all residents, and it's just great. So thank you to both of you and to all those who are not here tonight and that are here tonight for their work on it. Okay, next, we will move on to a report from our Village Manager, Mr. Frenzer.
A report, Mr. President.
Mr. Stein, our Corporation Counsel.
A report, Mr. Mayor.
Next item is Item 5, which is the Report of the Liquor Control Commissioner. There's no report tonight, so we will move on to our Standing Committee reports. We start with Land Use, Trustee Pierce.
Okay. First item, Item 6.11, I move, we remove from the table Case Number 2018Z27.
All right, it's a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so we've removed it from the table.
Okay, so I-- do I have to remake the motion?
Now, it'll be a motion to approve.
Okay, so that now I move to approve a request for a 440-square-foot lot area variation, a 20-foot front yard setback variation, a 4-foot south side yard setback variation, a 6.44-foot combined side yard setback variation, a .05 floor area ratio variation, a 27% front yard impervious surface coverage variation, a 4.6 rear yard total impervious surface coverage variation, an 18.6 rear yard pavement impervious surface coverage variation, a 7.0 side yard garage setback variation, a 16.5 front yard eve setback variation, a 3.0 side yard eve setback variation, a 1.0 combined side yard eve setback variation, a 17.0 front yard window well setback variation, a 12.5 front yard porch setback variation, an 11-foot front yard porch step setback variation, a 2-foot side yard deck setback variation, and a 5.5 side yard garage eve setback variation to permit the construction of a four-unit townhouse development in accordance with the plans submitted as amended at 514 Poplar Drive.
All right, is there a second?
Second. I was going to make the joke, I didn't get that. Could you do it again?
Actually, I just, just, just for sake, you know, the item is 6.11. I don't know if it stands on its own, Mr. Stein, as in the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, because I-- Trustee Pierce, I think you missed one, honestly. Like, I think you missed the 4.6 rear yard.
I'm sure the six of you talked and set me up for this, but anyway.
All right, so it's been moved, has it been seconded? Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Mr. Adler, will you approach? As we have been doing on these cases, Mr. Adler will sort of summarize the issues that are in front of us.
It's okay, I'm not going to read all the variations again, but I will point out one thing. There's a lot of variations, but the-- a lot of variations you see relate to the fact that the actual structures, the townhouse structures, are looking for a front yard variation and a side yard setback variation. So a lot of those variations you see, if you look under Number 10 up there, there's like three related just to the eves. There's a number related to the front yard setback for the porch, the porch step. So there's a lot of variations, again, that all relate back to the fact that they're asking for the structure to be closer to the required front yard and to the required side yards. As we do during these types of requests, go over what is the question for the Village Board to consider. It's whether it's meeting the standards for a variation. In this case, there's no special use needed. A lot of times with townhomes, you see a special use request because the units themselves aren't fronting a street, or there might be more than five units in a building, or more than one building on a lot. In this case, there's no special use at all variations. The variation standards, which are up there, A through F, we could leave up there if you'd like. Those are the standards that you need to find to grant this relief. We do have the plans, which we could throw up also if you would like the site plan up there instead, the revised site plan up there instead. I have up on the applicant speaking.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Adler right now? He's obviously not going anywhere, so we'll have the opportunity to ask questions later as well. Trustee Wolf, you look like you're ready to ask.
Yeah. As I understand it, there were a few changes--
Yes, yes.
Could you summarize what those changes are for us?
The big change was the-- actually, I'll pull up the revised plans.
The big change is, one of the two-car garages was removed, thus lowering the floor area ratio variation. So if you look at the revised site plan that came with the additional correspondence, there are now two open-air parking spaces, which are facing south. So now you have two two-car garages that are facing the alley and have access to the alley. It's my understanding that those are for both of the end units, and then you see another two-car garage, but that two-car garage has two one-car spaces, and that's for the middle units, two and three. And that's my understanding that the middle units will have open-air parking, and that's the parking that you see before you get to the rear yard of Unit 4.
Okay, so in other words, the middle units get a one-car garage each--
Correct.
--and one surface parking spot each.
Correct. And that allowed them to lower the floor area ratio slightly. What it also did was slightly increase the flat surface impervious variation necessary because they went from a structure, and the way we look at a structure is differently than we look at flat surface, but, you know, both of those obviously are impervious areas. So basically, the big change was to lower the floor area ratio to get rid of two of the indoor parking spaces.
At one point in time, this was zoned as part of the Village Center District, is that right?
It was. My recollection was, I believe it was when the 1990 zoning code rewrite was done, and at that time, this property was rezoned. There was a request for a drive-through bank at one time on this, and most recently, we had a person who was interested in doing an apartment building on this property, but both those uses weren't conforming with the zoning and did not get approved or didn't go too far in the process.
And this one, while, you know, there are variations requested, this is, this is the-- not only the permitted use, this is the identified use for the R2 district?
Correct. The R2 district is supposed to be a transition district between the R1 and the VC. Obviously, this is an area, the R2 zoning district, that we have a lot of single-family homes, and a lot of people have been putting money into those homes. There's two unit buildings, single-family homes. And directly north on the public alley is the Village Center.
Other questions for Mr. Stradler right now?
Just the two cases that you mentioned, they didn't come before the zoning or Village Board.
The-- I believe the drive-through bank did, but that would have been in the early '90s, and the other one did not. That one went to the Land Use Committee to talk about whether there was any openness to allowing a denser use, and there was not, for an apartment building.
Right. Because that sort of eliminates the concept of a transition.
Right, right.
And can you just discuss what is being, what the property is being used for now?
Sure.
And how that--
It's a contractor's yard. They also allow storage of other commercial vehicles, and so it's a legal non-conforming use that can remain as long as the use doesn't expire for 180 days or more. Also, if they found somebody to do the exact same use, they could move in and continue that use. Any change in the use in the building? At one point, there was a barber shop in there. If you wanted to do that, there is-- you would have to go through the special use process to go from one legal non-conforming use to another non-conforming use. And I think years ago, that's how the barber shop got in the building.
And just building on Trustee Plunkett's question, so how long has it been kind of this, you know, this-- how long have they been using it as like a contracting site?
I know it's been prior to 1990--
And do you know how--
But I don't, I would assume it's been much longer than that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And do you know how long they've been trying to-- we've-- the owners have been trying to find other uses for this property?
Sure. Again, going back to the early '90s, I know that there were, they were approached by, at that point, it, I believe it was the bank, and then, again, the apartment building. I don't know the listing history on the property. I think a lot of times, it might have been some of those users just contacted them because it is a commercial piece of property that it looks like it would be ripe for redevelopment.
That's a very polite way to put it.
Yes.
Okay, so don't go far, as usual. I'll ask the applicant to please come forward now. Welcome.
Thank you.
So the Members of the Village Board, we've reviewed the report from the zoning Board, so we're familiar with the proposed project, and obviously, Mr. Adler brought us even up a little more up to date. So in your presentation, you know, feel free to take a few minutes to describe the project, but certainly, please focus your comments on the concerns raised by the zoning Board. In making its recommendation, the Board found that your proposal did not meet all the standards of review, and in the zoning Board's report, they described that. And so in your case, their findings of fact were on Page 26 of the report, which, if you have the PDF, is Page, I think, 432. And I'm going to read that just to sort of focus your comments here. So, "A majority of the zoning Board of Appeals finds that the request does not meet the variation standards of Section 5.4.F of the zoning ordinance. Specifically, there are no conditions of the property that are causing a hardship. The applicant is creating his own plight by proposing a development with four units. That the requested density might be more economically viable is not a standard for granting relief." So, you know, in your comments to us, please address the zoning Board's concerns, as those are the issues at hand. So with that, the floor is yours.
Thank you, thank you. Good evening, President Blinsky and trustees. We appreciate your time this evening. My name is Kevin Gaisley. I live in Winnetka. I've had offices in Willmet for, I think, nine years now, so not quite a resident, but almost. A locally-based real estate developer with experience on the North Shore and in the Chicago area. We've assembled a team of highly respected real estate professionals. Ross Friedman, my partner, is a veteran, a contractor of townhomes and single-family houses. Jim Chambers and Dave Dought with FWC Architects, same thing, seasoned townhouse design professionals. Mike Black, Black Engineering, knows North Shore stormwater issues and solutions. And Tim Garland, our landscape architect, whose mantra ought to be-- And Tim Garland, our landscape architect, whose mantra ought to be "local and sustainable." Our request tonight is for several variances to build the four townhouses that you see on the screen. This is the view from Linden and the railway tracks looking north and east. Our approach has been very proactive and transparent. We've reached out early and often, meeting with neighbors and staff. Staff's been very helpful with their guidance. To date, most of the neighbors have been supportive of our plans and our approach, and I think some are here tonight to speak on our behalf. Very brief history. We started this process about a year ago and have a land purchase agreement that's conditioned on zoning approval. Key issues with the existing site include stormwater sheet draining onto the neighbor's property and onto a hard-packed gravel site which drains directly into the village storm system. It's a non-conforming use, in our view, not very compatible with the adjacent residential. The existing buildings are in somewhat poor condition, and one of the buildings encroaches onto village property. I'll run through the requested variances. And while we received a negative recommendation from the ZBA, our feeling was that a number of, it was the number of variances more than the actual content of the request that caused some concern for the ZBA. Our proposed plan is shown on the right side of the screen, and the variance really consists of two groups. The first relates to setbacks. With staff guidance, we shifted the proposed townhouses closer to the street for the purpose of really opening up the backyards and holding the street to be consistent with the other buildings up and down Poplar. As you can see, as you go down, houses and garages are almost to the street. And then as you go north, which is Village Center, which is the lower left on that right-hand diagram, they are right on the street. Again, our plan is on the right, showing the existing, the requested setbacks in red. We thought this was a pretty good visual. So as John mentioned, most of the required setbacks are a result of moving closer to the street. It's a, it was a long list, John ran through it, front yard, eaves, window wells, et cetera. The remaining setbacks, you can see the small sliver on the north side, the top of the diagram, a four-foot sliver on the south side, and then the garage. And I should point out that the garage, while requiring a setback, does line up with all the other garages up and down the alley. Some are actually, I believe, closer to the alley than what we have proposed. We feel this is a dramatic improvement over the existing condition.
Right, which is why I was going to ask you, so on the left, that's-
That's the-
-all that in red there is stuff that's in the rear yard setback closer to the neighbors, the existing buildings?
That is correct.
Okay.
So really, the second category of variance request relates to unit count and FAR. This is a graphic that shows how much more land would require to get to 12,000 square feet of land, which would give us four townhouse units. It's that, again, that 440-foot sliver. So we have 96% of the land necessary. We believe four is the right number here. From a design perspective, we're working with a very long frontage of 118 feet on Poplar, with depths of only 83 feet and 146 feet, which creates this odd trapezoid-shaped We feel four units fills this frontage nicely while leaving some spacing at both the north and the south ends, and presents very well to the street.
And would you say, would you say the width, well, okay, maybe you're, I'm ahead of you, but the width of the townhome that you're proposing is what you would consider a standard width?
Yes.
It's not neither too narrow nor too wide?
No, they're not overly large, they're 20 feet. We saw an FAR of .77. We've reduced this to .75, as John pointed out, by removing the garage. I will point out that the FAR measurement does include the covered front porches, which we really think are an essential part of kind of the hometown feel that we want to create here, the enhancement of community and neighborhood that we think is important by having a covered front porch for folks to sit on.
So, and if you were to remove those porches, would that eliminate completely the amount of FAR?
I don't think so. I have to check with, not completely, but it would reduce it a couple-
Okay.
-a couple of percentage points closer?
Okay.
Yeah, it would be getting very close, but... The next couple of slides address stormwater. Current building is shown on the left, and as you can see, the, kind of that dark blue area, sheet drains directly onto neighbors' properties, to the east and to the south. There is, the eaves troughs where they are there on that building are not functional. The rest of the site is very super-hard-packed gravel and dirt, and drains pretty much straight out onto the street. On the right, the purple area is the area where we will be capturing the stormwater. So we're capturing, we're capturing the 100-year storm.
With underground storage?
Underground storage, yeah. I'll show you that in just a second here as I flip to the next slide. So the green piping is what will hold the 100-year rain. This meets Village and then the MWRD standards. And over and above this requirement, we're also going to add permeable pavement to the driveway areas, which is most of the area where you see those big long pipes running up and down. Most of that is driveway and outdoor parking. We're going to use either permeable concrete or permeable pavement. And that will go into basically a rock base, so basically add further storage capacity above and beyond. And as I go through, as we go through the Village math on that, we don't, we don't seem to get a lot of credit for it, but it is, it's effective, it works, and it is, it is positive in that, in that regard. So this system's going to, it's going to reduce the stormwater impact, certainly on the immediate neighbors, and we're going to make an incremental difference on the Willmett storm system in a positive way. So, you know, in our view, our architects have done a masterful job transitioning from Village Center to the residential areas to the south and east. Their goal is a clean, traditional, modern farmhouse look to complement the nearby residences. The sawtooth design, the subtle color changes, the difference in the windows, all give these homes an individual feel. Having the garages separate keeps the living space on the main floor, which again, a more traditional look in design and in keeping with, with the neighborhood. And again, covered porches, you can see pretty clearly in that picture. We believe they're, they're very important. Our landscape architect, I think, is an inspiring guy. We're creating a natural environment here with a variety of plants and trees that are native to the Willmett area, designed to attract songbirds and butterflies. We did engage an arborist to review the existing cottonwood trees. Two are completely dead. One doubles as a utility pole, and are at risk of falling. The remaining trees are at the end of their natural life, and according to the seller, the limbs break regularly. And according to our tree report, there are commet primary electric lines in the alley that are at risk of falling limbs from the, from the aged trees. Our replacement hardwood trees are a mix of native species. I think we've got two maples, a bald cypress, and I forget what the fourth one is, but they're all designed for long life in this environment. So, you know, in concluding, we believe we are following the guidance of the Village Comprehensive Plan. Neighboring property value enhancement, better livability and quality of life, compatible and supportive of the hometown character and feel, creating a more affordable, more affordable, smaller-scale housing for the, for the young old, the young seniors to keep residents in the community, and adding vitality and density to help support the adjacent Village Center. We believe we're fully in tune with the Village goals and objectives and need a little relief from some code requirements. We've done our very best to marry the site configuration, neighbor and staff concerns, and zoning restrictions into a beautiful and viable collection of homes, and ask for your approval of our request tonight. Thank you.
Questions? I can start at someone else. Young senior, but who do you really think is going to be attracted to this type of, what's your, what's your target market?
Target market's me, actually. My kids are gone. We went looking for a townhouse a couple of years ago. My wife and I, we live in Hubbard Woods, and there was nothing that was suitable. There was, there was old stuff with low ceilings. There was nothing that kind of had a modern vibe to it. And that's really what got me going, to try and find this product and search out this product, and being a real estate guy.
These aren't going to be attractive to fam, I mean, they're nice size, but they're still pretty tight for more than a couple people.
Well, full unfinished basement. It'll be just under 1,800 square feet plus a basement that's unfinished, and people can finish as they choose. You know, it'll be at a price point where you basically get new construction for much less than you get for a single-family home. So if you're looking to get into the school district, it could be appealing for young families. And certainly for people looking to downsize but don't want to be in a rental apartment because, just for size reasons or just because they want to be in a house with a yard, we think is a good alternative.
Just wanted to go back to that one diagram you showed, that it was like, had the, it had the existing site and the non-conforming, and the new site and the non-conforming. I just was curious. So is the, is your recommend, is your recommended site have less non-conforming variances than the existing site? That's I think what I'm trying to ask roughly.
Honestly, I don't think we did the-
I was just curious.
-did the math, Jim.
Or total.
I think we have an exact number on that, but-
Yep.
-the area is larger than the existing.
Yeah. But, but the vast majority of their red relates to being closer to the street, which actually, I think, I mean, you said, and I don't, John, you can nod your head and confirm that staff sort of suggested that closer to the street would be more consistent with the neighborhood area. So all the red on the left of theirs is sort of, in what, at least in staff's mind, we would, we would want as a community.
Well, I agree with that because of the location. I mean, if this were, they're-
Very, very different.
-farthest street from the train tracks.
Yeah, that's right.
So the train tracks versus if this were in a neighborhood-
Oh, yeah, you wouldn't put it up right.
So logically, to me-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I should have pointed that out, but you're absolutely right. It's, we're coming towards train tracks, not towards other homes or other homeowners.
Well, plus, the, the Village Center buildings just to the north are all up at the sidewalk as well. There's another chart.
That other diagram.
I think it's one before this one.
The 3D one shows that.
Yeah. So the actual, the conforming setback would actually look sort of odd.
Well, yeah, that's, that's the conforming one on the left.
Right.
Yeah, you know, I was also struck by the fact that I think that setback in the row house look does fit in with the neighborhood. And I'm trying to remember, Bob, I know you were on the board, but do you remember that little house like near Laurel and Eighth that had, it was such a small site, it would be impossible to build anything without variances?
Yeah, I think I was the only no vote on that one.
Anyway, what we ended up with was something with a setback that matches the neighborhood, and I think it looks absolutely great.
It does look great. My issue was the garage. That was my issue on that one.
Well, hopefully that's working out.
I do remember the case.
But, you know, I think, I think the, looking at how it fits into the context, whether it's that house or this one, it's really an important thing to think about, because this is an area that transitions between the single-family houses and some of the businesses farther up the street. And I personally think the row house look and the setback works really well here.
So would you jump back to that setback slide again?
Yeah. This one?
Right. And so the other, the other major setback ask is in the alley where the rest of the alley, you know, garages are built to the edge of the lot line all the time. And so if you like the front yard setback and you don't mind the alley, you're left with very little setback to question.
You can see on the top right of the site, the right diagram, the top right, you can see crosshatched in the next lot over, and that's the gentleman's garage. That neighbor's garage is actually set a little farther off the alley than a lot of the other ones. Richard Marie Jones, who are the next property over but off the screen, I believe their, their garage sits maybe two feet off the alley.
And could you clarify for us how garbage pickup would work? I know that was discussed, but if you could just clarify for us, that would be great.
Sure.
Yeah, come on up if you would.
This is Jim Chambers, our-
Hi, thank you. We actually did a little extra research on that and contacted the, the service provider for the Village and, and got their approval on what we proposed, and that is simply to stack the boxes along the east property line, and there's a fence there. And we checked and looked into the mechanics of, of their equipment, and they would simply back into the alley and, and pick them up. And they gave, we showed them a graphic of it, and they said, yes, this would work.
Would there be a beeping sound as they're backing up?
I believe so. And I honestly, I can't swear when they're not, they would pull forward in or back in, but either way, there's a backing-
There's a backing episode, yeah.
But not very far, probably 30 feet in or something like that is where they would have to go.
Like Manhattan, they don't come by at 4:00 AM and wake you up, you know?
That's true.
That's, that's the good news about that. So can we, Trustee Pierce?
The stormwater plan that you showed-
That's where I was headed, so-
-looks pretty unique. Has that been reviewed with the Village and?
This is Mike Black, Black Engineering. Mike, I know Mike has had some preliminary discussions.
Good evening. Mike Black with Black Engineering. I did talk to the Village engineer, but he hasn't gone through and done a formal review on this. We would go through that process. When I talked to him, I said, you know, what are the things do we need to be concerned with on this project? And I said, my opinion, it's stormwater detention and green infrastructure. And he said, those are the two things you need to be concerned with. So, I mean, with all these green pipes that you see in there, what we're doing is that the roof drainage, all the downspouts would be connected directly into that system. There's some inlets in the rear yard to pick up the rear yard drainage. So we're essentially capturing everything on that site except from the front porch out to Poplar, that little front yard.
So the downspouts actually go right into the-
Right.
And the Village engineer-
Some pumps as well.
Our Village engineer is here, and he can, you know, you want to come on, Dan? And while you haven't reviewed this, you know, given what's been talked about, is that sort of consistent with what our requirements would be?
Yeah. Good evening, President Blinsky, members of the board, Dan Manus, Village engineer. Our development review consultant did do a preliminary review of the engineering plans and found them consistent with our objectives in detaining stormwater and slowly releasing it to our system.
So no question better than today, but also, you know, what we, what we would require from any sort of development like this?
Correct.
Okay. That's where I was headed next, Trustee Pierce. So I'm actually sort of going through the lengthy list and crossing them off, and as, you know, the impervious surface, you've got sort of two issues. One is stormwater, the other is appearance. You know, do you want impervious surface in the front yard? But in this case, you know, as, as Trustee Wolf said, it's sort of what it is. It's, it's a row house look. And so you're sort of down to the density question, which is, the two requests related to density are the, the lot needs to be 12,000 square feet to do four units, and then there's a 525-foot floor area variation. So do you want, you want to talk a little bit about that again, or just go back to that, the slides on that? You had a slide that showed the strip, I think, and-
So that shows how much, what I view as, you know, obviously, a minimal shortage for the land requirement, but, you know, the math is the math. We recognize that we're short. When you look up and down the frontage, it's 118 feet. So if we built three units, and we've done, you know, part, part of this issue becomes my math, and my math issue is, I understand, is not your issue. But by building three units, to cover the cost of three units and the, the big infrastructure cost, the unit pricing goes well over a million dollars each. And in our view, those don't become saleable, we can't move forward. So we, to only build three doesn't work.
And how, how wide is that? So the additional 440 square feet, what's the dimensions of that roughly? Do you know? So it's three feet, three additional feet into the alley, and then there's no variance required, in essence, is what you're saying? required, in essence, is what you're saying? You'd be at the four unit, no variance for the lot size, so that you would have twelve thousand square feet, which means you could do four townhomes. Okay. And then the final question was around FAR, and the difference, you reduced the FAR from the plan that you presented to the zoning board, right?
We did. And, you know, we've looked at squeezing on this thing every way we can. And we dropped, one of the, we basically dropped a garage, a double garage. So, now we're with two doubles and two singles. To take it any farther would mean reducing the size of the units. We're already under eighteen hundred square feet, and we believe we're kind of at the edge of what marketable product is. We have to compete against Westerfield, and they're all roughly this size. They're right at, kind of in the seventeen hundred-foot range. You know, we're just not comfortable taking product that gets too small or too urban. We're still in a, you know, suburban environment here, from a space perspective. So, we just, we can't figure out any other way to squeeze on this thing. From an aesthetic, we really don't want to, you know, we can take the cover off the porches, but that really destroys the community sense and the neighborhood feel that I really believe is important here and in every community. That you get, hopefully, you get people sitting on the porch saying hello to their neighbors as they walk the dock.
And the bonus we give for front porch FAR doesn't apply?
Because it's a townhome? Okay.
Let's put that on our list.
I would, can I follow up? So, if we, if we had that bonus, though, John, do you know what the impact would be to the floor area ratio?
Well, I mean...
Roughly?
Bonus as it relates to a lot like this, you would get up to a three hundred square feet bonus. And so, probably, you'd be then within five hundred square feet of meeting the floor area ratio. I think you need around eight hundred. Aren't we only off five hundred now? What? Aren't we only off five hundred now? No, no, sorry. Sorry. I was relating it to the size of the lot. Oh, okay. Sorry. If this lot was eight hundred square feet bigger, you wouldn't need a variation, because you would, you would then be meeting the floor area ratio. What I was trying to, if you take three hundred, if you give a bonus for three hundred square feet, then that leaves the two hundred and twenty-some square feet for a variation left.
That would be the difference. The two hundred and twenty square feet is what you're saying is the difference.
And I, if we were going to do a bonus for townhomes that are not necessarily sure we need to, we would probably then want to look at a per-unit bonus, not necessarily what we do for a single-family home. Other questions for the applicant? And again, staff is here as well, once we're done with the applicant. Okay. Hearing none. Have a seat. Don't go far. We may need to ask you some more questions. So, are there any, before we proceed with public comment, is there any, are there any questions now for Mr. Adler, Mr. Manus, about the engineering or the community development standards? Okay. So, let me first ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the application. May I see a show of hands? I've got one, two, three, four, five, six, no, five. And is there anyone here who'd like to speak in opposition to the application? I see none there. So, I would remind you that we allot people three minutes to speak. So, anybody, you're in the front, so why don't you come on up first? Welcome.
My name is Marie Jones. I live at ten fifty-eight Linden, which is fifty feet, my backyard is fifty feet from this project. I've lived at that address for thirty-one years. I've spoken, I've had the privilege of speaking before this board on a number of occasions in the past, and it's always, almost always been in opposition to projects that are too big, too dense, too paved over, or require spot zoning. So, tonight, I'm really happy to stand up here and say, this is a terrific project, and we are really looking forward to having it in the neighborhood. It conforms to the character of the neighborhood, it conforms to the look of the neighborhood, it replaces a property that has been problematic for many years, and has been grandfathered for the current owners who happen to be neighbors of ours. So, it's time to close the door on that era, allow our neighbors to sell their property and to move on, and to welcome new families into the neighborhood. Linden Avenue, the north side of Linden Avenue is a kind of special place for R2, and we share the alley with commercial enterprises and apartment buildings on Greenleaf. Despite that location, our neighbors, we and our neighbors have invested in our properties over the years. People have added on. One of our next-door neighbors won an award from the village for the restoration of their house. People have invested in landscaping, electrical upgrades, everything that you can think of. And this development, we think, will really anchor the neighborhood and seal, really, the investments that we've all made in the property. So, I urge you very strongly to approve these townhouses. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sir? I hope she didn't steal all your thunder.
That wouldn't be the first time. I'm Rich Jones, ten fifty-eight Linden, thirty-one years. We have been through a number of different, as my wife has suggested, battles with developers in defending the residential character of the R2 district that we moved into in nineteen eighty-seven. I won't go into that. Some of them have been mentioned already. The one new thing I can add is the concern about density, and especially the question about noise from garbage collection. Currently, the trucks pass east and west down the alleyway. Nobody backs in right now. The biggest concern about noise is the fact that we back onto the village center with a lot of truck traffic from the Cashin Brothers, garbage collection at the apartment house on a daily basis. So, we don't see any particular change because of this project in terms of an imposition on the neighbors. One of the other issues that was brought up by the zoning board with regard to density was snow, and where do people put the snow? And that has not been a problem either, other than the time the apartment house put five feet of snow in front of our garage. But, so we see this, as Marie said, an anchor to a very strong residential community that for thirty years or more has been battling the encroachment of more intense development. And this piece of property is grandfathered, is the last remnant of the kind of industrial corridor that went along Wilmett Avenue to the north of Village Hall when it was a lumberyard. And I think prior, at some point, this property was a dairy. So, having it invited, having it come into the neighborhood as a residential, a small-scale residential community will anchor the property all along Linden Avenue. So, thank you very much. And likewise, I encourage you to support this very creative and sensitively designed project.
Thank you, sir. Who else? No? Sir? Welcome?
Good evening. My name is Tom Keefe. I live at ten sixty-four Linden Avenue with my wife Kathleen Kennedy, who's here. We would just like to second...
Is that, is that the corner?
Yes.
So, like, literally, the one that's next to it?
Our garage is, abuts that property.
Right, okay.
And is presently being destroyed because that property is in being kept up. It has no gutter. If I had time to show you some video that I have on a flash drive, you can see what effect rain has on our area from that property. I'm happy to show it to anybody later, but I won't take your time now. The only thing that I would add to everything that everyone else has had to say are two small points. One, being directly to the south of this lovely complex, we look to take advantage of that row to make our property conform with they might do and increase the excellence of that burgeoning corridor along Poplar. And the other thing is a practical point. I don't know how much this matters, but the owner, the present owner, has shown no sign of budging on price. They've done nothing to keep the property up. And we are just fearful that if this doesn't pass, we don't know what's coming on down the line, if anything. So, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Thank you very much for your consideration and your time.
Ma'am, you want to, no? He's got it? Anyone else would like to be heard? Okay. Applicant, if you have anything to add, you're welcome to add now, but otherwise... We may have a question for trustee Dodd.
I just had one question, maybe a broad question for the residents who spoke. I don't know. Well, I just had, or maybe it's for John Adler, but it's related. I just had a question of whether we have anything on record that ten sixty-two Linden, that's was not, is or is not in favor of this addition. So, we've had ten sixty-four, and we've had ten fifty-eight, and then there's just one more property that butts right up to it. And I just do, I wonder if we have anything on record, if you know.
If you want to come up.
Is that okay? Is that okay to ask?
Yeah, sure.
If I can, Rich Jones again. That's our neighbor to the west.
Right, yes.
That house was in bad disrepair. The residents had lived there for well over fifty years. Eventually, the family members died, moved on. The house was rebuilt. It was not torn down, but it was rebuilt substantially enlarged and was marketed for one point four million dollars. I think it was sold for about one point two in two thousand fifteen. The couple that lived there with their two twins aged five, the gentleman travels full-time, she teaches at a Hebrew school, very, very busy folks. We've kept in close touch with them. And they were the most directly affected by the roof runoff. And I can't speak specifically, but we have talked to them about the project, and I can say that there were no objections.
Thank you.
If that helps?
Yes.
Answers your question?
We think we have another answer to that question. If you want to speak, please come up, because otherwise, nobody can hear you in TV land and, you know. Tomorrow, you can go on the internet.
I would just like to second the fact that we've spoken with them, and they didn't seem to have any objection. They're just, we lost communication with them over the course of time.
Okay. Any questions for either Mr. Adler, Mr. Manus, the applicant? Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Who'd like to go first?
I'm happy to.
Trustee Sullivan.
Look, I think, you know, when this, when, obviously, when you read this and you hear thirteen variations, and it's a long list, it does come up of what's going on here. And I actually appreciate what the zoning board reviewed and what they did and what they found. I actually think the zoning board got it right, because they were, the challenge here, it should have come to the board, because the challenge is, where is the hardship? And we do this on all these new construction projects and how to minimize it. And, but for me, where I got comfortable with it, it's a tough lot. It's very close to village center. I think they are minimizing or improving the violations to our zoning code today. And that one chart that the applicant showed, shows that they are moving it from the rear to the front. And it does look, even though I didn't do the math, they're minimizing it. I totally agree with moving this one closer to the street, because unlike us borrowing from the neighborhood, you're borrowing from the train, and this is a good look. This property has been sort of not the most pleasant to look at for years. And, you know, we just heard from, right before the Chamber of Commerce, about all the advertising we want to do in Wilmett. This is an advertisement. When people are going up and down the train line to see this, I think this would be a good look and draw. What I like most about this and where I can support it is, it's for sale. So, it's going to attract, hopefully, an occupant that will take pride in their home. Not that renters don't, but there is a certain different level of maintenance when you own something. And so, that really gave me comfort. I think seeing the team here, that's local and six people, they obviously got to really know the code and where we wanted to make improvements. And I think that's going to be a benefit to Wilmett. So, in this case, for me, this is why, you know, on the board, this is where you have to make the exception. This is a lot that is a little bit challenged. What we all would want there, and something conforming, just isn't feasible. It's not going to be economic. I also look and compare this to the other townhouses we approved on Wilmett Avenue, which were a little bit more discussion around those and a lot more, or not as much neighborhood support. This, we have the neighborhood support, you know, other than the one resident who's not here. But we, you know, we didn't hear much outpouring of, we don't want this. Again, I think this is going to not only improve this neighborhood, but it's going to improve Wilmett. So, I can support this.
Trustee Pierce?
Yeah, I agree with trustee Sullivan. I'll support this. I'm very impressed by the strong neighbor support. I think the uniqueness of the site drives these variations, and I think the developer and their team have really worked to minimize the variations. I'm also very excited, like Dan was saying, as to the impact this will have on this location. For many years, I lived right next door to a commercial site that was rezoned R2, and it was unclear if the existing property was going to remain commercial, or would it become townhomes. It became townhomes, and it's just a, because for years, neighbors wondered, what's really going to happen to, and there was this tension. And it really had a great impact, because it really implemented what our vision was for the area, and that was, you know, townhomes, which are needed. And I think the neighborhood will benefit. I wouldn't be surprised if further south down Poplar, there's renewed interest in development, in townhouse activity. So, it's a very exciting project, and I'm happy to support it.
Yeah, I agree with trustees Pierce and Sullivan. Not in any particular order. Mr. Jones, I thought that was very interesting that you said that was the remnant of the last kind of commercial area. I was not aware of that. I think that's a fascinating bit of history. I always kind of wondered how that happened to be there. I've kind of followed some of the proposals for this site. I was on the Appearance Review Commission before, and we looked at a couple things. Some very good friends of ours used to live next door to the Joneses, and I know this neighborhood has been very involved in the other proposals, the drive-in bank with the lights and some of the other apartment things. So, I know it's a neighborhood that really does get involved in what's going on in that area. They really are concerned with making it the best neighborhood possible. And the fact that they are behind this, I think, says a lot. And also, what I mentioned earlier, I really think the rowhouse look would be great for this area. I think it looks very nice. I think the aesthetics are great. I think it would fit well. And it is a problem site. The, it's a strange bit of lot that happens to be left there. And I remember when our friends lived there, there were problems there with stormwater. And I drove by there today after the storm, and there was water pooling everywhere, and it was, did not look so great. So, I think this would be a big improvement. I think it would be very nice. It seems that there is a need for townhomes, and this is very close to transportation, which is in keeping with their master plan for transit-oriented development. So, I'd be very much in favor of it.
Trustee Dodd?
I have to say that I can also support this project. I wasn't sure, and then this morning, I drove past the property, and it was actually right after it rained. And to say I was, I can appreciate how those neighbors who live near that property, I can appreciate how you feel after seeing that and seeing it this morning. So, I agree with everything else that the other trustee said, so I won't reiterate that. So, thank you to the developers who presented what you presented tonight. It was very helpful, and it was a really great perspective. So, I appreciate that. And thank you to the residents who came out tonight in support of it, and I can support this project.
Trustee Plunkett?
I won't spend a lot of time either, but I can support this. I think it's a very thoughtful design, and I can, I appreciate how we went through all the variances and explained why those variances, for this lot, why it's important and why this works. I think this is a great location for townhomes. They look like rowhomes. And I would be, yeah, I'm very excited about it. I think it's a great use of this property.
Trustee Kersman?
I'm happy to support the proposal. I thought trustee Sullivan captured my thoughts very, very closely. I did wonder at first about four two-car garages, and that change, I thought, really sealed the deal for me. But generally speaking, I thought it was just a great opportunity for an unusual lot that has profile, as trustee Sullivan pointed out, and that this is a great and unique opportunity. So, thank you for everyone's work on it. So, thank you for everyone's work on it.
So, I agree with trustee Sullivan that I think the zoning board got it right when they sent it to us. Because when you look at our standards of review, it's new construction. And new construction, it's really hard to give any variances, because it's very, you can't find the hardship. You're creating the hardship. But our board has more latitude. And, you know, when you really ticked off all of the, and we did this, and I was crossing them off on my, on my agenda, when you really ticked off all of the items, all the setback variations make the project more desirable, not less desirable. And you're left with the two-density variations, which is, you know, I think they said 3%, but 400 square feet, a three-foot strip of additional land. And you basically, all your variations go away. I guess the question, you know, all the, it looks like the board is going to support this. And so, the question, if you were against this project, is what exactly are you going to wait for? Because this looks just about as good as it can get. And it's a great transitional property between the Village Center and the more, and the homes that are more single-family in character in this, in this neighborhood. So, I will enthusiastically support this project. Any further discussion? Okay. Again, this item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so it will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the board. An affirmative vote is a vote to overturn the Zoning Board of Appeals' recommendation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. So, the motion carries. The Zoning Board of Appeals' recommendation has been overturned. So, our process is that at the next board meeting, the ordinance approving the variations will be on, it'll be on the consent agenda. So, certainly can, somebody can be here just in case. But at this point in time, I think you're, you should be pretty confident that you're good to go. So, thank you very much and welcome.
Thank you very much.
Back to trustee Pierce.
Item 6.12, a move that we removed from the table, case 2018Z14.
That's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Are there any opposed? All right, so it's been removed from the table.
Okay, now I move, we grant a request for an 8.6-foot rear yard setback variation to permit the construction of a one-story attached garage addition in accordance with the plan submitted for the property at 1200 Cleveland Street.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Again, this item also comes to us with a negative recommendation from the Zoning Board of Appeals, so it will need five votes tonight to overturn the recommendation of the Zoning Board. I'm going to ask Mr. Adler to come up first.
Should I pass these up?
Just before, and not off, on this case, but I know these have to come before the next board meeting, but hopefully, they know that, because I know they're part of their deal, they're not, we don't have a meeting until end of September. Has somebody informed them that?
No, we should do that. We should do that. Yes, for those of you who are aware. Can we, can we wait, wait on the handouts until Mr. Adler? You can do that when you, when you start, thanks.
Sorry.
Right, just for people's information, the September 11th board meeting is being canceled because of Rosh Hashanah, so our next board meeting isn't until September 25th, I believe. So, I believe Mr. Breaman is out in the hallway letting them know. Okay. Onto item 6.12. Mr. Adler, looks like you're working on your tech.
Getting it back. So, it was stated, this is an 8.6-foot rear yard setback variation to allow one-story garage addition at 1200 Cleveland. Like the previous request, to be granted, the Village Board needs to determine that the standards for a variation are approved, are met. If the variation is, if the standards aren't met, the variation would be denied. There are the variation standards. You do have some additional information from the neighbor, the Chamberlins, the 1212 Cleveland, removing their objection based on a number of conditions or agreements with the petitioner. And again, that's in your, your packet.
Right, that's page, I believe it's pages 545 through 548, for those who may want to go back to it. 544 through 548.
And in case you're, when you look at this, this is actually a two-story addition, which is conforming. That's to replace the two-car garage, which is going to be converted to living space. And then what, what needs the variation is the one-story garage, which I believe is proposed to a storeboat. And that makes three garage stalls, two of them, which would be conforming, the two that are just immediately north of where the existing garage is.
And are there any other setback variations? The property is otherwise conforming on the front and side?
The property's not conforming to the front. The minimum in the front would be 25 feet. I think the house is, the existing house is closer than that. The existing house is just around 16, 15, 16 feet from the property line, the Thornwood property line. But besides that, the, the house is conforming.
Okay, so it's nine feet roughly closer to Thornwood then would be conforming?
Correct. I have to say, I don't know if there's an established front yard setback on that block of Thornwood, which would be greater, but yeah, approximately nine feet less than what would be required off the front yard off of Thornwood. The Cleveland side is, regardless of the entrance of the home for zoning purposes, is considered a side yard adjoining the street. And that side yard needs to be 30% of the lot width to the house.
Right, and there're plenty. I mean, because of the sighting of the house, it's, there's, there's no question on that one.
So, John, is the, is the fact that this is a corner lot, is that what is driving the setback variation issue in terms of the way rear yard is defined?
If, if you're asking if the front yard was Cleveland and that was a side yard and not a rear yard, yes, it would, it would be conforming, because you would do 10% of the lot width. In this case, there would be a pretty big side yard, because it's 130-some feet deep, so you would need around 13 feet. So, if the, if the front yard was Cleveland, if it was laid out in the similar manner of the other homes down in Cleveland, you'd be looking at a setback of between 13 and 14 feet.
But then, the rear yard setback would be wildly non-conforming then?
And then the front yard would be non-conforming also, because the house is currently closer than 25 feet to the Cleveland setback, the Cleveland property line. So, the front yard would now be Cleveland. That setback would not be met either. That would be slightly.
Right, okay, so it's, you know, no matter how you sort of position it, somewhere, they're in the setback?
Correct.
Okay. Other questions for Mr. Adler? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Adler. Now, yes?
I only have six. Some of the people are going to be here tonight, so I don't know if anybody wants to share. It's just showing the two different layouts.
Let's try to get along, we can share. No, they're not, they don't vote. You don't have to give them. Thank you. Because we'll end it.
And then I can give it back to you. I don't do all these, okay, just let me get to my thing. I have to stand.
So, let me give you my speech that I just gave a minute ago. So, we've read the case and we're familiar with the project, so certainly take a few minutes. But the key thing here is to talk about what the zoning board found. And I will read the zoning board's findings, which were as follows, and this, if anyone wants to follow along, it's on page 505 of the PDF. The Zoning Board of Appeals finds that the request does not meet the variation standards of section 5 dot 4 dot F of the zoning ordinance. There are no conditions of the property that impose upon the owner a practical difficulty or peculiar hardship. The house is located closer to the front line than permitted, resulting in more area in the rear yard than would otherwise be permitted. There is no hardship preventing the owners from making reasonable use of the property. The applicants are creating their own plight with the design of the proposed addition. There are other things the applicants could do that would be conforming. There was neighbor testimony that the proposed addition, being located closer to the lot line than permitted, would injure the use and enjoyment of their property. The variation, if granted, would alter the essential character of the neighborhood, which generally does not include three-car garages. So, that's what the zoning board said. And if you would be sure to address that in your comments?
Yes.
To us.
Okay.
So, the floor is yours.
Testing, okay. So, we're asking to build a three-car attached garage, which will encroach 8 foot 6 into our rear yard setback. This plan leaves 16, it's 16 feet from our shared property line with our neighbors to the north, the Chamberlins. We are a corner lot, so the rear yard is our neighbor's side yard. What is allowable to build is a two-car attached garage and then another detached garage, which, which will sit three feet from our shared property line. And I did get all the, I did speak with every, oh, ComEd, every, you know, the gas company, everyone. Everyone did say that we could do that. However, we feel that this plan that is allowed will create a hardship for our neighbors to the north, in that it blocks their light and sun and their sightline. Again, since our lots are perpendicular to one another, this plan isn't the best for them or us from a visual standpoint. So, our best intention is to create a visually pleasing structure that fits in well with the neighborhood and doesn't inhibit anyone's view, light, air, or sun. We have made agreements with our neighbors to the north to plant nice foliage to add to the overall manicured look between our homes. We are asking to please grant this variance to build 8 foot 6 into the rear yard setback. So, before you, the handout that I sent, the first page shows if we, if, what we're asking for the variation for, to build 8 foot 6 into our rear yard. And that would be, have all of the garages together. The second one shows that we would have a two-car attached garage, and then we would have 14 feet, and then we'd have another garage that would go 32 feet long by, oh, God, I can't read. I believe it's 12 feet, 12, 12 feet? Yes, 12 feet by 32. And that would sit three feet off of our neighbor's property line. Visually, it just.
Let me, let me, I'm going to interrupt you just to bring Mr. Adler up, because it begs the question, why, why can they put something three feet from the property line when they can't put something 25 feet from the property line?
It's the difference between how we treat detached garages and attached garages. So, detached garages, you see all over the village. Typically, you'll see detached garages in the rear yard. So, you'll see a detached garage and on the other side of the rear property line, another detached garage. This is a little bit unusual, in that this is a rear yard that fronts or joins a side yard of the house to the north. But typically, in Wilmette, you see rear yards adjoining rear yards. And we permit, at least as relates to interior side yards and rear yards, garages located entirely within the, that rear, the required rear yard, those to be three feet from those property lines. Still has to meet the side yard adjoining the street ver, setback, which is the 22 feet with some change. But it's a detached garage, so it's able to be three feet from the property. Now, as a detached garage, depending on how you design it, it would be anywhere from 15 feet to 20 feet in height, so it's going to be one stories. Not like if it's a part of the principal structure, where you could go 30 to 35 feet, depending on the district you're in. So, again, a detached garage is allowed to be three feet from the rear of the property, the rear property line.
And you're allowed to have both an attached and a detached garage?
You are. The limitation is no more than four parking spaces for this size a lot. There's also a limitation for a detached garage on a lot this size, which would be 600 square feet, and this, this garage is under 600 square feet.
Because it's, it looks like 12 feet, eight inches?
By 130-something.
By 30-something?
Yeah, I mean, sorry, by 30-something.
Okay.
So, and I'm going to ask John, just so we appreciate kind of this challenge here, to describe the fire truck case when I was on the zoning board.
On Wilmette Avenue.
I had heard about the fire truck case. I didn't realize it was that long ago, so I've been around.
I think it's on the 1400 block of Wilmette Avenue. It's just, just west of the park there, south of McKenzie. A gentleman who owned an antique fire truck, this was in R2 District, and he had a two, two-unit building he was building, and he wanted to do a large garage fronting on the alley, so the entire amount would have been fronting on the alley. One of the bays would have been deeper for the antique fire truck. He came in for a variation. The variation was denied. At that meeting, he did say, well.
He said the hardship was his fire truck.
Right, it was his fire truck. And, and that was something we never heard before. And the zoning board denied the request, so he came back with what was conforming by pushing the garage into the buildable area to lower the rear yard coverage maximum. And so, when you drive by it, you will see there's now a large garage mostly in the buildable area. And probably arguably less in keeping than if the garage was built in line with the other garages off of, off of Wilmette Avenue.
I just want to add, I drove past the, that property today, because John had suggested it, and if anybody wants to see a picture of it, or I could put it up, it, it is interesting.
If you have a picture, I would certainly.
And I'll, and I'll. Interestingly enough, the house to the east, then we changed the ordinance to limit detached garages to, detached garages to 600 square feet. Well, the gentleman who owns this house also bought the house to the east and wanted another big garage, but couldn't do it, so he did an attached garage to, because then he's not limited to the 600 square feet maximum. So, if you now drive by there, you'll see two large garages in a row.
I'm going to wait for the picture.
I do have one more question, though. I miss, I don't think I totally understood. Why is it that we allow detached garages and attached garages?
I mean, at probably best, we just have never prohibited that.
Okay.
Again, we limit to, in this case, it would be size lot to four indoor parking spaces if somebody wants to have that, if they want to have a two-car. If they want to use their floor area for that purpose, most people won't. Most people, you get a 440-square-foot bonus, most people will be pretty close to that, or maybe 500 square feet to get extra storage. You'll see, you know, people do maybe three-car garages. You don't usually see people do, you know, a detached garage and an attached garage, but it does happen.
I want to, just help me understand, because again, the detached garage, I mean, I think that's a big point. You can do a detached garage, and as you said, it goes, usually, they go rear yard to rear yard. But we also have limitations. They're typically one story.
Yeah.
And in this case, you know, it's significantly lower. It doesn't add to, or I'm going to say the bulk in the back. We're not building coach houses. So, when I look at this, you know, with it all attached, there's a lot more space being added. I mean, you're going to see that from the street.
Which, which one, there's a lot more space? With it all attached?
With it all, no, there's, it appears more, it's right there in the, more bulkier at, from the street side, versus if you have the detached, at least it's behind and less of an impact. And I get, you know, with the neighbor right next to it, they've agreed to it, but, you know, there's limitations on the height and, and what you can and can't do, and what you can use it, what you can use in that garage. Now, in this case, it doesn't, I get the neighbors don't like, or whatever, they're acceptable, but it's, it's not just the neighbor that we have to concern, it's the neighborhood and what the look is going to, what, what's going to be the look from the street.
Right, but the difference, what you're, what you're saying is.
Yeah, I didn't say it very well.
In the, no, but in the, in the attached version, it's two stories all the way.
Correct.
In the detached version, the one car is separate, so it's separated, and it's only one story high. Okay.
And it's further back in the yard.
I know.
It's right next door. It is, okay.
And you know, the other thing that I notice too right away is, the part that's toward the neighbor is the lower part. The part that's near the, near the lot line is, would be, with, the detachment would be a lower, lower thing.
Okay, so does the picture make it around? Should we give?
I have another question for John.
Okay.
Mr. Adler? If you were to consider Cleveland as the front yard, so we're not talking about a detached garage in the rear yard anymore, what is the, and I
garage in the rear yard anymore, what is the, and I know this is not what applies here, but it's what it looks like, where could a detached garage be if we're talking the side yard?
Sure. It would depend on the width of the lot off of Cleveland. If you're, we're still assuming that it's as wide as this lot, which is a hundred and thirty-some feet deep, you would have to be ten percent off that, that lot line if you're not entirely in the required rear yard. If it was a fifty-foot lot, it would be five feet. If it was a sixty-foot lot, it would be six feet. So, again, if it was a, if, if you just kept the pattern of Cleveland going so that this was a fifty or sixty-foot lot that ran the, the same direction as the property to the north, it'd be ten percent wood over that lot width is, so that would be, you know, if it's fifty feet, five feet, if it's sixty feet, six feet.
But in this case, in this sort of hypothetical, artificial scenario, it would be thirteen feet because it's a hundred and thirty feet wide.
Exactly.
And so, it would be thirteen, I think that's what you were asking.
Thirteen versus three, right?
Correct.
The back, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, if, if Cleveland was the front, I mean, if it was the front, which it looks like the front, then, then a detached garage couldn't be as close to the property line?
No.
As it would be if it was considered...
Not at that location.
Okay.
Correct. Right, and that's actually, this is actually why we have variance procedures, because it's technically the rear yard, but it's not the rear yard, but it's a side yard, and so what, you know, that's why we're all talking about it. I'll ask Ms. Maris to come back up again. Sorry, we, we could have sat there and listened to you, and we just would have been waiting to ask Mr. Adler the question of why, why this is okay.
It's a confusing situation.
So, floor is yours in terms of talking about, you can go back to talking about this. I just, we had, we had to stop and ask why, why this one was feasible, given everything, so...
I would like to add that the second floor of, of both garages are not going to be living space. We are not utilizing the second floor as any type of living space at all. And on the blueprints that I did give to the village, we're only using it as storage. I don't know if that helps. Really, I, I don't have anything else to add. I think that overall, the look, having the attached, looks better in the neighborhood. Our only, we would never want to do something that would make our house look stupid. No one would ever want to do that. No one would ever want to devalue their home. So, our ask is that you please consider the three car for the overall look of the neighborhood, not just our house, but all of the homes on the street.
But, you know, again, the, the case comes down to, I want more space and the code doesn't let me have it.
Well, it comes down to, I can do it, but it's not gonna look right. I can do it, I can do the detached, it just is, doesn't look right. And so, the hardship at this, right now, directly does affect the Chamberlins, because it is three feet, it's a very long structure, three feet off of our property line, and it's what they're gonna look at, because it's not tucked into the backyard.
But what you could do, what you could do is convert the garage, existing garage, to living space like you're doing, and instead of building a three car garage, build a two car garage. And then, where you're not even here, you could do that by right.
I could, but if we are going to do it, then we are gonna, then we're trying to do it in a way that does make sense for our family.
Okay.
Just understand what you just, because this example where it has the detached garage...
Correct. The example...
You can do this without...
I can do this without being here, but I'm asking you to please look at both options, because the detached garage, it, it's not, it doesn't, it's not favorable for anyone in the neighborhood. It just, it, it doesn't look right in, in, in looking with the neighborhood, it just doesn't. I don't want to be that fire truck house. We already have enough attention. I would just like this to look nice and check all the boxes.
But aren't you the boathouse here, instead of the firehouse?
Not really, because the boathouses, the boat's tucked away.
Okay.
You've never seen, did you see the boat?
Fair enough.
We created diversion with Christmas lights instead. Anyone have any questions?
I guess I have a question about impervious surface. If you did this one, I'll call it option B.
Yes.
With the detached garage, what would the site plan look like? How would you get to...
There would be grass, grass in the middle of the two...
Of your boat across the grass?
Uh, grass in the middle of the two garages.
Mm-hmm.
The, the architect would...
Yeah, I know, but how does it get there?
We could do gravel.
Wouldn't you have to add some paving?
We could do something that's, the, the architect said that he could work it out where it would, he, he was in contact with the village, asking them about that, and he said that he would figure it out. I don't know what that really means, but as far as impervious coverage, I know that we're okay.
Well, it looks to me like you'd be adding some impervious coverage. Seems to me you'd need to have some sort of a concrete driveway to get your boat there.
Mr. Adler, is this a side yard, front yard, something?
That's the site plan, I just...
Okay. Yeah, so, that's some ex, extra impervious coverage right in there.
Do, do we have limitations on side yard impervious?
We do, but it, in this case, it's conforming. It's my understanding that that site plan's conforming, and you'll see when you look at it, it's fairly challenged, the angle to e, e, enter the garage, and I'm sure that's because of the village's limitation on both rear yard coverage and side yard adjoining the street coverage.
Jesse, well, would you pass, would you pass that along here?
Just, I mean, can you use the history of the house? I mean, how long have you lived there? Have you done work on the house? What have you...
So, the, the home has been this way since I moved in. I moved in, in nineteen seventy-eight, in, in my parents' house across the street. And this house was already constructed, it was constructed in nineteen sixty-eight. The gentleman that lived there did a beautiful job. When we purchased the home in two thousand and six, all we did was move around some things on the inside and add a fireplace. As far as that, we have touched nothing. We have done nothing, I mean, we've planted some vegetation.
Yeah, never come, this is the first time before zoning or...
Uh, no, when we added the fireplace on the Thornwood side, I did have to come and ask for a variance for the three foot fireplace, because the home was built too close to Thornwood. But, back then, it was allowed, now it's not. But we have done nothing from a construction standpoint as far as any additions. We really do love our house, we love our neighborhood, we do love our neighbors. This, you know, is something that we do want to do, and if we're going to do it, we'd like to do it the right way. In order to achieve what we want, we can do it with the detached, but I just don't feel that it's the right fit for anybody, and that in, in and of itself would be a hardship, especially for the Chamberlins. And I believe Mr. Chamberlain is here, so...
And we'll ask, well, I'll ask for a public comment in a moment, yeah. Any other questions? Okay, any questions for Mr. Adler?
Yes.
Okay. So, you would have a seat for a moment, and then I will ask if there is anyone in the audience who would like to speak in favor of the application. May I see a show of hands? Okay, anybody who would like to speak in opposition to the application? Okay, so, there's none?
Yeah, on the Chamberlins next to them.
Yeah.
We withdrew our...
I understand, yeah.
Good.
Yeah, so, the, the board is aware that, of the correspondence and that you withdrew, but you have the opportunity to speak if you'd like to now.
Thank you, thank you, President Blinsky and the board members. The, my name is Cedric Chamberlain. My wife and I, Maura, live at twelve twelve Cleveland Street. We moved there less than two years ago and have done a substantial number of improvements to a house that was in disrepair. So, we're, we're proud of the neighborhood and proud of, of being in Wilmette. So, when we first were approached with this proposal, our initial reaction was the impact it might have on our property value in a negative way, because we spent quite a bit of time and effort and money on ours. And that was the reason for the objection primarily. So, but after further investigation, we came to the conclusion that it really wasn't an impediment or a hindrance to our property value. We share, there's a shared alley between us, which I'm still not clear what a shared alley is, but it has no real practical value to us in terms of improving our property to the way it's situated. There's nothing that we could actually do with it, so it's sort of a moot point from that perspective therefore. And, and also getting some opinions that what they're trying to do is not going to negatively affect us. We then came to the conclusion that we could withdraw the objection, so, for, for that reason, and also the fact that if we could get some commitments, and the letter of agreement that you see in front of you that we got, there were some things that, because we're right abutting to their backyard and, which has been a problem, quite honestly, since we've been there, with the boat not being, sitting right within feet from our property line, and various sporting equipment and toys, things you'd have in your normal backyard are right next to us in very plain view. So, one of the things that we put into our withdrawal was a commitment from the Marises that they would plant sixteen arborvitae, eight foot tall, like they have on their site plan. That would give us some privacy as well as hide things from, from the, from, that might be out there in the, in the, in what you might typically have as your backyard. So, with that, we've, we feel that, you know, we get something, they get something, and, you know, that would be our position as why we withdrew our objection.
Any questions? Trustee Dodd?
Yeah, I have a question for you. So, we have two proposals in front of us, obviously one that is conforming and one that's nonconforming. And I just want to make sure I understand, do you have a preference in the two?
Initially, because of, of what I just mentioned, we were thinking that option B would be a better solution. In terms of the issue of a garage being right next to us, there, the front of our house faces Cleveland, does not face, so it faces to the west, not to the south. So, we really don't see the side yard that often unless you go outside. The garage, we have neighbors in the back that have a garage abutting up to our property as well. It, you know, it's, it's on on top of us, but in a way, it does provide some privacy from them, because we don't see them, because the garage's in the way. So, I, from that perspective, you could, you could view it that way. But, given the fact that we could also do the same thing with some foliage plants, it seemed to us that, again, it, you know, if it's something they want to do, and it was within the city's view, the village's view, that, that was doable, either one would, would work. So, that's kind of where we came down on it, yeah. Does that make sense? Does that answer the question?
Other questions? Okay, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else? I don't think there, I think there wasn't anyone when I asked. Okay, so, the applicant, if you have anything further to say? Okay, any other questions for Mr. Adler? All right, discussion? Trustee Pierce?
So, I, I'm anxious to hear from other trustees, but I have a hard time supporting this. I think the applicant is very genuine in trying to do what's best for the neighborhood. But that's not, you know, I mean, I, I struggle with the hardship as well as the precedent that we'd be setting when someone comes with other situations and says, I really need a three car garage, and, and it's new construction. Sure, we could, you know, we recognize that she may just build something that maybe we would rather not have, that's kind of an unknown, but I, I, I don't see how she really meets, or they really meet, our, our standards, and so I have a hard time supporting this.
Trustee Sullivan?
I mean, I agree, I mean, I think, you know, this one comes down, what is the hardship? Everybody, we all want, most people would want more garage space to store our stuff. And, you know, I struggle with this one because you're exactly right, I'm not sure I love the conforming, if they don't come to force in the other car garage. That's something that we have to weigh, that would they do that? Would it diminish their value? Would it diminish the neighborhood? I don't like being over the barrel of choose this over what's conforming, because this looks right, and it just doesn't feel right to me. This does not, there isn't a hardship here, other than we want this. I get the lot size, it is a corner lot, and some of those we see a struggle, but it's really big, so, still undecided on where to go on this one.
Trustee Dodd? Whoever makes eye contact with me loses.
I think I'm where the other, where trustee Sullivan...
You have to make the call, please, Mr. Blinsky.
I think I'm where trustee Sullivan and trustee Pierce said, I mean, I don't really love either option, to be honest. I mean, I don't think there's a hardship here to allow a three car garage, and I'm concerned about the precedent that would set. And, you know, I, I think as soon as we start saying, well, we're gonna allow a three car garage outside of our variances, then that just sets us up for other situations. On the other hand, I don't love the conforming option, and, but that said, I feel like there still is not a hardship in place to support the, the first option.
Trustee...
I agree. I, I just don't think there's a hardship here, and, and I also worry about setting a precedent, because, you know, being an older community, there are sometimes things that are not so convenient, and I, I just think, yeah, if we, it would set a precedent that I think is not appropriate, and I don't think there really is a hardship here, so I also would not support it.
Trustee Kersman? I'm going back and forth now, like, turning left, turning right.
Like with the previous case, I feel the zoning board did its job and did it correctly. The difference is that through discussion, there was consensus among my colleagues and I that there were site-specific considerations and a unique opportunity with the previous case, and I do not see that here. In the last case, sometimes, just generally speaking, the word improvement in our land use cases, I struggle to understand that. And in our previous case, it was very clear to me what improvement was. And I do, I do not see that here. What I see are quirks in our zoning that may need to be addressed at some point, that would put us, that because of those quirks, we're looking at this option, as trustee Dodd pointed out, that neither of which is super desirable, and I, you know, that, that needs to be rectified at some point. But I join my colleagues in not seeing hardship here and am challenged with this.
Trustee Plunkett?
Um, you know, I, I see where the board is going with this, and I, I think that the option B is, is difficult, and it's challenging because it's so close to the lot. I don't know if they're, you know, conforming, you could build a two car garage, I don't know if they could fit in a two and a half car garage, they could go a little bit deeper, there might be a few tweaks that they could make. I know that we had that other case with the garage coming in, building up the lower garage, and they ended up with like a one and a half car garage. That's obviously up to the applicant as to whether or not enlarging a two car garage would help them or not, but it is difficult to find, you know, to find the hardship as we define it in the ordinance.
So, I concur with my colleagues. You know, I, I do think that this is, you know, sort of one of our more basic zoning cases, where, you know, I'd like more than the lot allows. The sighting of the house sometimes can be considered a hardship, but in this case, you're, the, the house is in the setback in many places. It's not, you know, the only reason this is even a possibility is because the house is sighted into the front yard setback. It wouldn't even be a possibility if that was the case. And, and look, I live in the neighborhood, I'm familiar with, very familiar with the property. I sort of agree, and I don't know if trustee Sullivan was exactly saying this, I'm not sure option B is the worst option here, because this house will be massive on the street if it's two stories for that en, entire length. And so, there, there's definitely no hardship, and I'm not even sure you can make an argument that the nonconforming version is better than the conforming version. I don't disagree that it looks odd, different, but from a bulk and sort of neighborhood feel point of view, I'm not sure it's actually worse, so I won't support the, the request.
Any additional comments from anyone? Trustee Sullivan?
Can I just, before we take the vote, and what's, what's, if, if the vote comes out where I think it's gonna come out, does this mean they have to wait on anything else for a year, or do they... Or do they, they go back and say?
Mr. Adler, you want to approach?
They can say, you know what? Because where I'm going is, is there a way that we just go this, go this back and come up with a hardship or think of versus, and again, I just want to get over the, what I feel is, is sort of putting us in a tough position of, if you don't prove this, I'm gonna do that. I don't like that, you know? Now.
So what's, what, so if, if it's, if it's voted down, then they have to wait a year to reapply unless you find that it's substantially different or materially different or something like that?
Correct, it's not substantially similar request. If it's substantially similar, then they would have to wait a year to apply.
And, you know, if they said, well, okay, I cut my setback vari, obviously if they got rid of it, then it's substantially different, but if they cut it in half or if they, how would you view that? Or hard to say, and I don't need to put you on the spot.
You know, I don't know if they were just cutting it in half, if they cut it in half and lowered, I mean, right now, the, the garage bay where the boat is proposed is two stories, if that was lowered to 12, 13 feet, and they cut a number of feet off the variation, maybe I would say.
Well, it could, it could come back, but it still has to go through zoning and through us, so it's not, you know?
Right, I mean, it still needs to.
Versus they could come in, we say negative recommendation tonight, they could come in and option B, assuming all the numbers calculated and there's no variations, they would.
I, I guess if they didn't want to take the chance of how I might view their proposal, they could withdraw it and then they would be able to submit something, and I wouldn't then be looking to see if it's a substantial change, but I don't know.
I'm, I'm gonna call the question. I'm not gonna, I'm, I, I don't think it's appropriate, given how far we've gone, you know, there should be a thumbs up or thumbs down on this proposal tonight, so. Okay, so if there's no further comments, again, this item comes to us with a negative recommendation from the zoning board of appeals. It will need five votes tonight to overturn that recommendation, and an affirmative vote is a vote to overturn the recommendation. Madam Clerk, please call the roll on the motion.
Trustee Wolf?
Nay.
Trustee Sullivan?
No.
Trustee Plunkett?
No.
Trustee Dodd?
No.
Trustee Kersman?
No.
Trustee Pierce?
No.
President Blinsky?
Nay. Motion fails. The zoning board of appeals recommendation stands. Back to trustee Pierce.
Okay, item 6.13, case number 2018Z64. I move we grant a request for a special use for an adult daycare center and a 17-space parking variation to permit the operation of Our Place Adult Daycare in a, in accordance with the plan submitted, the use running with the use.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second, and before we get started, I believe trustee Dodd has a statement to make, so I'll recognize her now.
Great, thank you. I'd just like to acknowledge for the board here as well as for the residents here in the audience, it has come, some people have raised a question. I do have a daughter with special needs. My daughter with special needs, her primary school, she goes to Newtshire full-time, but she does participate two afternoons a week at Our Place. I've talked to our legal counsel, Jeff Stein regarding this issue, and there is a detailed letter in the packet regarding the conflict of interest. I'd just like to say, similar to many land use cases that come in front of the board, I am very confident that I can address this issue fairly and will address the, look at the concerns on behalf of everybody in this case, and will do what I think is best on behalf of the entire community. I don't know if legal counsel wants to add anything in terms of the conflict of interest.
Well, just that there's a detailed memo in the packet, which is under this item, but you are not precluded from casting your vote in this matter based upon the relationship that you have with Our Place or the applicant. It would be no different than, again, if you had a child at the public school and that school came for a special use, which has happened before this board. So it is my opinion that you have every right to vote on this matter, as long as you feel that you can fairly do so.
Okay, thank you, trustee Dodd and Mr. Stein.
Also, when I read the motion, I mean, there's a condition. Do I, do we add that now? Do we wait after, until we talk?
Something you guys. So the motion that you made was not including the condition. I think we'll, I think we'll wait through the discussion on whether there's any conditions, this or otherwise, that the board will propose. So I think you, I think you handled it appropriately, trustee Pierce. Okay, once again, Mr. Adler, you're up.
As stated, this is.
It's a busy, busy night for you tonight.
Yes, yes, busy land use night. The applicant, Our Place, is requesting a special use for an adult daycare center and a 17-space parking variation. There's really two things for the village to look at in this case. There's the special use standards and the variation standards. In this case, if you determine that the standards are met and vote yes, the special use and variations are approved, and then Our Place continues to operate at 1020 Forest. If no, and the special use, if you find that special use and variation standards aren't met and you deny the request, they would no longer be able to operate out of 1020 Forest. The variation standards, which this is the third time you've seen these tonight, and then there's also the special use standards, and those are A through K there. So for this request, both the special use and variation standards must be found to be met. You know that village engineer Dan Manis is here. Also here is the village's traffic consultant, Peter Lemon. So if there are any questions in regards to that, he is here tonight.
And for the benefit of people here, the, the, when we talk about the variance standards, the variation standards, hardship is front and center on that. With the special use standards, hardship is not included as a standard of review, and the special use is, in essence, a permitted use that, that in the opinion of the drafters of the zoning code, require sort of a second look to make sure that the special use works as it's currently, or as it's proposed or as it's configured. So it's, it's not, it is a, it is, in essence, it's closer to a permitted use versus a prohibited use. It just requires a special look. So, okay. And are there any other highlights that you would point out between the two standards? I mean, obviously, there's many of them are very similar.
Yeah, they're, they're similar. I think that, as you said, the big difference is with the variation, you're supposed to show hardship or a practical difficulty for a special use that's not necessary.
Okay.
And I, I should state, there are standards that aren't up here that relate specifically to adult and child daycare centers that have to do with adequate drop-off and pickup, and those are in the zoning code and I think outlined in the report. So I apologize, those standards aren't up there, but those are standards that the zoning ordinance specifically outlines for daycare centers.
Right, right. Okay, any questions right now for Mr. Adler? Okay, thank you. So I'd ask the applicant to come forward. Mr. Frank, are you speaking on their behalf?
I am going to defer.
You've heard my, you've heard my speech twice tonight, so I'm gonna just jump to a couple of comments. One is, first off, you are here with a positive recommendation from the zoning board of appeals, so as a result, I did not say that you needed five votes tonight. But I do think it is, it would be instructive for me to read what the minority of the zoning board of appeals found, because that sort of summarizes the issue that I believe is the issue in the case relating to traffic and the light. I apologize, this is, this is not particularly short, but I think it'll get us focused here. So a minority of the zoning board of appeals finds that the request does not meet the special use standards of section 5.3.1 and the variation standards of section 5.4.1 of the zoning ordinance. Specifically, adequate measures do not exist and are not certain to be provided regarding ingress and egress to the use in a manner that minimizes traffic congestion. There was much testimony about the volume and type of traffic in the alley causing blocked alley access and queues backing up onto Willmet Ave. One significant contributor to this are the PACE services, which because of how they operate, it has been difficult to modify the behavior so far. The proposed traffic management plan relies on enforcement by the applicant and cooperation from PACE. The success of this plan is not certain. Similarly, adequate road access does not exist and is unlikely to be provided. The primary entrance for the program is at the rear of the church off of the alley. This is not able to be changed, and so traffic to and from the program will continue to become primarily from the alley, which is not equipped for the volume and traffic and type of traffic associated with the use. As a result of the traffic problems in the alley, the use has been shown to be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the neighborhood. Testimony was provided regarding the blocking of alley garages and concern for safety because of the volume and speed of traffic in the alley. Furthermore, no evidence was submitted that the use does not substantially diminish property values in the neighborhood. The negative impact of traffic from the use may have some impact on property values in the neighborhood. So again, that was what a minority of the zoning board found. You do come here with a positive recommendation, but those seem to be the issues that you should address tonight.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Hal Frank. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Meltzer, Pratil, and Stell. I'm pleased to be before you this evening on behalf of Our Place, and I think we can take credit for an overwhelming majority part of your 900-page agenda packet for this evening. And we're not gonna run through many of those pages. I do appreciate, Mr. President, that you're running through that minority report because I do believe it focuses on the primary issues that we would like to discuss this evening, and also because it, it focuses on the fundamental point that I made at the zoning board of appeals public hearing, which is, we acknowledge the issues that have been identified and some of the problems with traffic and, in particular, bus traffic in the alley that the neighbors have identified. What we have asserted, what we asserted at the time, and what I would maintain again and reiterate this evening, is we believe that with the new traffic and parking management plan that Our Place has been working on now for months and been talking not only amongst ourselves but with your engineer and your traffic consultant about, we believe that the standards are met and can be met if that plan is effectively implemented. And that was the point that we made at the zoning board public hearing. So obviously, people can respectfully disagree, but we disagree with the minority report and with the, and with the neighbors' position that the standards aren't met. We believe that even if there are issues, the standards are met and can be met if this plan is adopted and effectively implemented. As all of you know, or many of you know, the village has a long history on challenging applications like this, where there is an existing situation to take applications such as the Our Place application and, and use them as opportunities to make things better for the existing residents. We think this is another one of those applications. The issue comes up quite frequently because, as you know, uses like this, churches, schools, et cetera, have grown up in our, the way our country has grown up, in residential neighborhoods. So it's not uncommon to, to have these kinds of challenges before you. So we think this is one more situation where the filing of the application, the village determined, even though Our Place has been in operation at 1020 Forest for many years, almost 10 years, that the need was there to come in and apply for a special use application. It actually created an opportunity to identify the issues and do exactly what's happened, which is make things better. So having said that, as a brief introduction, I would like to turn the floor over to Jane Gallery, who is the president of the board of directors of Our Place and one of the founders. And I'd like to have her summarize for you a lot of, present a little bit about what you may know or already know about Our Place, but more importantly, what has occurred since this process first initiated, and, and even more importantly, what's happened since the zoning board of appeals public hearing.
Okay. So, and I, I will tell you in advance that I think we're all very impressed by Our Place, and you certainly can spend a few minutes talking about the history, but, but please do focus on, you know, what you've done and to rectify the situation. That would be, that's what I think people will be most interested in.
Okay, as, as Hal said, I'm Jane Gallery, and I'm the president of the board. I'm also the mother of Frank, who's 31-years-old and has been a member of Our Place since the very beginning. And the reason we exist is because before Our Place, it was very difficult.
Can everyone hear her? No, so, yeah, I'm sorry, you have to lean in a little bit.
It was difficult for adults with developmental disabilities to stay in their home communities and be contributing members, and that is our mission. And Willmet has been so supportive in helping us accomplish that mission. The Newtshire Township Board has been supportive, and of course, the church in providing us such a good facility and a mission partnership have helped us survive and thrive to the point now where our vision has become a reality. Our young adults are able to stay in the community, they are able to contribute, they're part of Willmet, and, and Willmet has embraced them, and we have also given back to Willmet. As you learned in the many letters from families and supporters, this central location is pivotal to our mission. Our participants are able to engage in their community, the community is able to participate with them. We have volunteers who join the program, many of whom learned about us through the community, and we also support the resources in the community. 23 of our current participants live in Willmet, and we've worked really hard to address the concerns of our neighbors. And over the last nine months, we feel we've made significant improvements, and I'd like to review some of that progress. So we worked with PACE before, about a month ago, we, we were not actively engaged with the managers at PACE, but they've come out to meet with us so that they could understand the procedures, and they've helped us make the plan work. Several of them are here tonight, and they can answer your questions as well. We moved all of the buses out of the alley. They're now in the parking area behind the church. And just so you understand, the, the area behind the church, it's not a typical alley. The, the parking lot for the church is entered through the alley. So the buses now come into the alley, but they immediately go into the parking area, so they're not stopping in the alley or blocking the alley. We agreed, PACE agreed to help us enforce this plan, and they've been very effective in that. They've also helped us reduce the number of buses in the last month. There have been fewer than 30 buses per week, which is about half of what, when we first started the application process.
And they've done that by help, trying to consolidate passengers. Think a little bit more about it.
Well, if they're, in the past, maybe three buses would come to pick up five passengers, and now they've consolidated and cooperated, one bus will come and pick up the five if they're going to the same location. In the past, sometimes a bus would drop somebody off, and a different bus would come five minutes later to pick somebody else who was leaving. They've helped cooperate with that also. So they've consolidated, and they've done a great job helping us with that. We've been keeping a daily log of all the PACE activity, the amount of time they're in the alley, the number of people who get on and off, and the num, the amount of time that the PACE buses are in this parking area behind the church is 90 minutes per week. You can compare that to the 16.25 hours per week that 9th Street over by Central School is closed for bus traffic. So the residents on 9th Street cannot get into their street 16.25 hours a week. We're not blocking our alley at all, the PACE buses are pulling into the parking area, and it's less than 90, 90 minutes per week. And PACE officials have been very responsive. When we call about a noncompliant bus driver, they're right on it. In fact, one of our bus drivers who came in last week and, and was rated perfect said, and I really don't like the fact that you reported me last week. So we're getting that compliance. We got the cars off Forest. Formerly, our staff was parking there. We have one staff person parking on Forest now and one of our minivans. There are five parking spots in front of the church. We're using two of those on a daily basis. Our staff is actively managing the traffic. This was one of the recommendations from the Kimley Horn Report. They're out there at every pickup and drop-off time. In the evening, we have four people out there. That's our busiest time, the six o'clock time. The PACE drivers have been rated as being perfect or good. We keep the comments in our log. 75% of the time last week, that's up from 57% in the past. That means they've pulled perfectly into the parking spot where they're supposed to be in our alley. Yesterday, all five buses were rated perfect. And this shows that the drivers are learning and that the, the PACE management is cooperating with us. We toughened our enforcement procedures to ensure the compliance of our families. So we have a family agreement that everybody has to sign where they acknowledge that they will follow the procedures. We have a simple, one-page procedure plan, and it, and they agree that if they do not follow the procedures twice in a calendar year, their participant will be suspended from the program. We've not had to take any action on that in the last month. All registered families have signed the agreement, and they re-up that agreement five times a year, every time they register for a program. There are a couple of other issues I'd like to address that keep coming up that don't have to do with the parking procedures. A lot of people have challenged our growth in saying that we're, we're planning significant growth by asking to stay here at the church. That's absolutely not true. Our enrollment is. Our enrollment is not like a school, and I think this is where people get confused. We don't have, like, 40 slots, and once we fill them, they're done. We have three sessions a day, 16 sessions a week. So somebody can sign up for one session a week, one three-hour session per week, or they could sign up for all 16 sessions. We don't limit that, other than if the session itself is full because of the staffing or the capacity in the facility or in the vans. We, our growth has been variable. We don't, because we don't recruit, we don't market, and we don't have these slots to fill. In 2016, we enrolled a total of 99 participants, and that is, that is an unduplicated count of people who came during the year. In 2017, it was a total of 92. So far, in 2018, we're at 84. It may end up being closer to 90 because we still have another session to go. We have another session at the end of the year.
But if someone, if someone comes to one session once, they're in that count?
They're in the, they're in the head count.
Right.
That's our, and this is what we need for reporting for our foundations and grants because they want an unduplicated head count. We also then report when we need to on the number of hours or sessions that people are participating in. But it's confusing, and I think that's why when people talk about a cap or have we gotten too big for our facility, we need to understand how our participants come to us. In the summer, we only had 65 individuals. So it's difficult to, when we, when we put these different numbers out, we've been, we've been accused of saying, of fudging the numbers. We're not fudging the numbers. This is the reality of how our enrollment works. And our, our mission is to provide this individualized detention, and we have a ratio of one-to-one or one-to-four, one staff to four or one staff to one person. That's also a limit on our growth. And just finally, why this particular location works for us? The church has been a great partner, and they've supported us. It's an old building, it's a, it's a difficult facility, but that support means a lot to us and to us accomplishing our mission. The central location is also directly tied to our mission. It allows us to build strong relationships with volunteers and with other stakeholders in the community. Also, the expenses associated with a church building are much lower than those associated with a commercial property. We receive no state or federal funding, and we keep our fees to 50% to 60% of our revenues because when you think about the challenge of a family who has an adult with a developmental disability, they face having to pay the equivalent of a college tuition every year for the rest of their child's life. So we need to help support them that way also. And the church has an elevator. This is extremely important and very rare in an old building. And we need that, both for some of our participants who have mobility issues and to qualify for some of the grants, grant funds that we get. So we've seen a lot of progress, especially in the last month, and we're committed to being accountable, as you can see, and we're going to continue working with PACE and with our families to make sure that the, the whole area is safe and accessible for our people and for all of the neighbors. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a few concluding comments, if I could. First, I want to note and hearken back a little bit to, Mr. President, your opening remarks about the village board meeting and every village board meeting, where you expect respect and decorum among all the participants. I want to note that, you know, we've had meetings with the neighbors, and as recently this afternoon, I had telephone conversations with Mr. Figuera, who has a very impressive piece submitted as part of the agenda packet. At all times, the neighbors have been extremely cordial, respectful. We know that they do support the mission of Our Place and the value of the services it brings to the community. So that's not an issue here. We understand that, you know, the neighbors' issues are, issues are traffic, in particular, bus traffic, not Our Place, and we appreciate that. We also obviously appreciate the fact that the Zoning Board of Appeals did recommend approval of the requested relief that Our Place has asked for, and we have no problem with the concept of a look-back provision, which was also recommended by the Zoning Board of Appeals, because we're proposing that if an ordinance, if the board is willing to adopt an ordinance approving the requested special use permit, that it would be conditioned on Our Place implementing effectively its new traffic and parking management plan. And that, again, your history and your precedent has been that that would be done with a six-month look-back provision to see how, how well is that plan being implemented by the applicant or the petitioner. So we have no problem with that. We also, Our Place would have no problem with the concept that you've also incorporated into some of your other ordinances that addresses, address issues like this, which is to have the village engineer have the authority, as a result of that look-back provision, to go back and recommend changes, additions, modifications, whatever you want to call them, to the traffic and parking management plan, which would then have to be implemented. We would not have a problem with that as an additional condition. And then the last thing I wanted to suggest to you, and this is what we lawyers would call new evidence, that I'd like to lay before you. And first, let me give you a little bit of history here. As I said, we've met on a couple of occasions, maybe more than a couple, two or three, with the village engineer and with Mr. Lemon from Kimley Horn, the village's traffic and parking consultant, about how to address what we think is the largest issue, not the only issue, but the largest issue, and you've, again, heard about it and read a lot about it, which is the PACE buses in the alley and the use of the alley, we, by PACE buses. We think our plan completely addresses the issue of stopping and blocking in the alley, as Jane Gallery just said, but it doesn't eliminate the issue of PACE buses using the alley for traffic, which we believe the buses have a right to do. So we opened up a dialogue about how to address that last issue, the actual use of the alley by PACE buses, with, with Mr. Manis and Mr. Lemon some time ago. And then, coincidentally, it came up at the zoning board hearing when member, zoning board member sermon said, "Well, what about this as an option for taking the traffic, not completely out of the alley, out of the alley, but substantially, or quickly off of the alley after it enters off of Willmet Avenue?" And that got us into a little bit of a dialogue about what are the what-ifs. And we talked about at that point publicly, this, a concept that we had talked about with your staff and consultant of a bus turnout lane. And so that's been thrown out, and when I say that, bus turnout lane on Willmet Avenue. And so it's been, it's been talked about and thrown out for a couple of months now, maybe six weeks or something like that. And so what I wanted to share with you is that since the zoning board hearing, Our Place went so far as to engage a civil engineer to see how that might be implemented, if it's at all possible. And what we're talking about is the concept of putting in a turnout lane where, on Willmet Avenue, immediately adjacent in village right-of-way, immediately adjacent to the church, so that the buses could come south on Willmet Avenue and drop off and pick up there, and program participants that are arriving or departing by bus could come directly from the church through, over a sidewalk and not in any way, shape, or form into a traffic, a traffic lane or an alley. And this would require, you know, cooperation from a lot of different entities, and we're not sure it's possible, but what we did was we asked the civil engineer to put together a concept plan, which I have. It's relatively hot off the presses. I know he's reached out to the village engineer, but I'd like to pass that out, if I could, to all of you. I brought some extra copies and share with the neighbors, and just to get your input on this concept and talk about how that, too, may become part of the discussion.
Yeah, just to understand, I'm confused as to what it is. So if you have something-
Right.
-be happy to accept it.
But we're not, this is just an idea. We're not proving anything.
Yeah, no, 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 this is-
It's just more true-
Well, I, because one of the questions I was going to ask was, if we find out the traffic plan doesn't work, what do we do? And I guess this is one of those, what do you do? What could you do? You know?
And, by the way, this is also briefly handed out this evening to Mr. Lemon and Mr. Manis. So I know there was an effort to try, one of the questions, first, let me explain what the concept is here. So the concept would be to create a bus turnout lane in the right-of-way, as you can see, immediately east of the church, in the right-of-way of Willmet Avenue, assuming that adequate right-of-way is there.
Sure.
Good idea. If you zoom out a little bit, if you can.
Can you flip that down?
Yep. Okay, so here's the church, obviously-
North is face, north is up.
Right. Southbound Willmet Avenue. The concept would be working with PACE to get their drivers to always come south on Willmet Avenue and pull into this turnout. It's called a bus turnout. And as you can see, it would facilitate, it would make it possible to have those in transit on these buses to exit directly to the property, to a sidewalk and go into the church, into what is sort of like a foyer there, a little lobby. It's got windows, you can see who's coming and going, it's doors, doors with windows. So, you know, I think, you know, this would be a nice improvement if it could be built, and it would work. And as you can see, it would totally, if all transit came from, PACE transit came this way, it would take the buses, not only pull them outside the alley for drop-off and pick-up, but take traffic out of the alley, if it's feasible. We're still, this is, just like it says on the plan-
Mm-hmm.
-it's a concept. It's, this is a concept plan. We've initiated conversations, but I don't know the answers to the village's position on, you know, is this feasible? Are there utilities that would need to be relocated, which would cost a lot, probably make it cost prohibitive? But it is, and again, Mr. Lemon and Mr. Manis have just seen this, so they, this is without their input or comment. But the thought would be that this is an option to respond, to President Polinsky, when you said, "Well, what if the plan doesn't work? What if even after changes are made to the plan at the suggestion of the village engineer, it doesn't work? What would be the next plan?" And this is what we're thinking could be the next plan. We've already, at the civil engineer that we're working with, gave us a very preliminary estimate of cost. He may be right, he may be wrong, but I could tell you if he were right, Our Place would, they'd have to figure out where to get the money, but they could live with that cost. If it became two times or three times that cost, then it would become cost prohibitive, and it wouldn't be a feasible option. This, by the way, I wanted to mention this before, I'm sure you're familiar with the concept because it's on Lake Avenue at St. Joe's, north side of Lake, just east of Ridge. Same concept. So, you know, so again, you know, that really, that concludes our presentation. We, I wouldn't, I would suggest that Our Place wouldn't have a problem if this did somehow work its way in to whatever conditions you might be willing to consider. Again, because there are some things we still need to ascertain, cost, right-of-way, utility locations, permitting, all those kinds of things. I would say, you know, if it would work, we wouldn't be, Our Place would not be looking for the village to pay any portion of this cost, wouldn't be looking to the village to waive any of their standard fees or anything, even though, even notwithstanding the nature of Our Place, they wouldn't be doing that. But, you know, if, if it would work, we think it would be the ultimate answer. And I would say as a last comment, that we would like, as an option, the right to, if we do all this analysis, to do, to be able to construct this improvement. Not necessarily coming out of the box as a requirement, but it would be our intent to continue this discussion, to work with your engineer, your consultants, to fine-tune the plan, to hardline the cost estimates, and if it can be done, you know, I believe Our Place, the board would support it, and not wait till those other steps that I mentioned before to get this implemented.
Right. I think, again, even though it's a concept, it's helpful from the point of view of people saying, "Well, what if it doesn't work?" Because I'm going to ask the engineer and the traffic consultant, "Okay, so what if it doesn't work? What are sort of the steps? What are other things that could be done?" And this is sort of an ultimate, like, and finally, you could go to this, which would substantially mitigate concerns about buses in the alley because there wouldn't be any.
Correct.
I think, I guess that would be completely mitigate, not just substantially mitigate.
Correct.
Okay. Are there questions for Mr. Frank? Trustee Pierce.
So earlier, when Jane was describing the way it works now, with buses come in, I'm assuming, turn into the alley, and then pull into these parking spaces that are there now.
Right.
So they, and then that's where people unload.
Right.
And, and so, the alley access right now, when that happens, is not blocked? Is that correct?
Right. What, historically, I believe, you know, the concern was, and the issue was, that the buses would pull into the alley, stop, drop off, pick up.
Right.
Sometimes, as you saw from the pictures that the neighbors presented, sometimes they would pull into these parking spaces on a diagonal basis, and so the bus would stick out into the alley somewhat. So with the changes that have been made, first of all, those parking spaces always had wheel stops.
Right.
Those have been removed.
Right.
So now, if, if a bus, I, I think if a bus pulls in diagonally, which they're not supposed to do, they're supposed to pull in on a parallel basis, so they're completely out of the alley. But I think because the wheel stops are gone, maybe even if they make a mistake and they pull in diagonally, because they're gone, the buses can pull up so far, you're, again, out of the alley. But the plan is now, what they've been doing recently, is I believe the buses have been pulling in on a parallel basis in this parking, which I think was the initial recommendation of the Kimley Horn Report.
But, but I guess the, the length of the bus versus the length of the space that's there now, I'm trying to understand-
Yes.
...what's happening now. It, it works.
This-
With the alley-
The bus fits, I think, is what Trustee Pierce is asking. Does the bus fit?
And what I, if I understand, Trustee Pierce, what you're asking, the parking area you're looking at right now is definitely longer than what we're showing here as a conceptual bus turnout lane? And I don't know if that's what you're-
No.
Oh, okay.
I'm just trying to understand what's happening now.
What I think what he's asking is, when the bus, when the bus pulls in, is it out of the alley?
Yes.
That's-
Yes. The answer's yes.
I have a visualization of that, if you'd like to see.
Yeah?
I have a follow-up question for you, Hal. So when the bus pulls in, just, and it's a follow-up to what Trustee Pierce said. So the bus pulls in and is out of the alley, obviously, and he was asking regarding the length of the bus, but in addition, there is, there are additional parking spaces, I believe, that the, that the students who are not taking the bus, so the families that are picking up, can also pull in diagonally into the alley. Correct? There, so there's, there's room in the current plan for the bus to pull in-
Yes.
-and then for how many families to pull in, roughly?
Three.
Three or four?
There are seven parking spots there, plus a handicap, so it's the equivalent of eight parking spots. We allocate four, plus the handicap area for the buses, which leaves three spots, and that's plenty of room. That's what PACE came and worked out with us with a bus. We went through the whole procedure so the bus can pull in and then pull back out. There's no reversing required for the buses anymore.
Right. So, and the signage that I saw yesterday sort of clearly delineates that this is for cars and stay away from this until-
Yes.
-the loading period's over with.
Yes. And once the PACE buses are done for the day, and we know because the staff knows how many PACE buses are coming, then we can remove that sign, and family cars can pull into the other spots.
Because this service is scheduled. This PACE bus service isn't, the bus shows up every hour. This is-
Yes.
-a scheduled point-to-point trip.
That's correct.
Right. Okay. Other questions for Mr. Frank? Or from, if I have a question, Trustee Sullivan?
Actually, from Ms. Gallery, I apologize.
I'm sorry.
And I know you went through quick, but help me on the enrollment numbers, the timing-
Okay.
-because that's where I am.
Okay.
It's, you know, and, and again, I support the program-
Okay. So, so, for example, on a Friday morning, we have as few, so the nine to 12 session, we have as few as four participants. We only have four people who come. That's, that's our vocational program. A lot of people come, so the programs are nine to 12, then 12 to three, and three to- A lot of people come, so the programs are nine to 12, then 12 to 3, and 3 to 6. So the busiest times would be in that middle period, the 12, because some people come nine to 3, or some people come 12 to 6. So in the middle of the, the middle day from 12 to 3, on Thursday, the largest enrollment we've, we have is 34 individuals there.
Correct.
So let's assume those four on Friday mornings stay, plus 30 others join them. So then in the middle of the day, it's 30, then maybe 20 of them go home at 3. And so then, the late afternoon, you know, some would go, so that's, that's where it gets complicated.
And is that the max? Is that, when you said you run out of slots at some point in a particular session?
Well, you know, again, it, it varies depending on the individual. So some are fairly independent, and they could be in a group with one staff and four to five individuals. Some really need one-to-one, or, you know, one-to-two. And so we have a lot of balls we have to keep in the air when we're scheduling our participants. And, and just so you know, if somebody calls and says, I want to come five days a week from 9 till 6, they don't automatically get that. We have to look and say, well, Thursdays from 12 to 3 is really full, so we could give you Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. Or, so you follow?
Right. So you moved to the community church in 2009.
Yes.
In 2009, how many participants were there?
Well, we had 26 participants who signed up because we had been doing a lot of community action here in, we'd been doing socials and informal get-togethers here in Wilmette. So we had 26 people sign up. We were only doing 11 hours of programming at that time. It was mostly after school because we knew we wanted to capture the younger individuals because once they turn 22, you really, you lose them if you don't have them already in your program. So that's what we started with. And we grew, we grew pretty steadily because in the summer of 2010, we started doing a summer camp, so we did a full-day program. And then we decided we would continue going from 12 to 6 every day. Then we gradually added the vocational, which is the nine to 12 in the morning. So it's been a gradual, but a steady growth. We grew from 26 to about 45, and then to 65. It's very stable lately, though. I mean, as you see from the numbers I've given you, that has, that has leveled off.
I, I guess where I'm coming, what's just, you know, you've tripled in nine years.
Yeah.
What's to say you're not going to triple again?
We can't. We can't possibly.
So how many connect the dots on why you can't?
Okay. Well, I'll tell you, the first one is budget. How, how can we afford that? As I told you, 50% of our costs are covered by fees. So we have to raise the other 50%.
Right.
For us, that means we have to raise $400,000 to $500,000 a year. There's a capacity to what we can do, you know, how much we can raise. So there's that. The facility itself limits our ability to grow because we don't have that much square footage and, and we can't, you know, we, we just, we don't just provide a babysitting or a typical, it's, it's uncomfortable for a lot of us to hear us described as a daycare because that's not what we do. 70% of our programs are out in the community. We have 40 different program options for the individuals during the day. So that's, that's going to limit our growth, are the staff attention that we provide to our individuals. It's a growth program. It's a, it's an educational program, so we can't just put six people in a room with one staff person. We're, we're working with individuals. So, so those are all constraints on our growth.
So one other question. When you have your programs going, are you the only occupant in the church? I mean, is other church activities, whatever they have going?
No, there are church people here who can talk to you about that, too. But we now occupy the second floor, and then we use occasionally, in the lower level, there's a kitchen and a large fellowship hall. And so we do some, some dance or exercise programs down there, and we do some cooking in the kitchen. But we, we lease about 3,000 square feet on the second floor.
So any further questions for the applicant? Can we have the village engineer and the traffic consultant approach? We'll see if the people have questions for them. I mean, I guess, I guess the big question is, you know, do you think what they're doing now is working? And, you know, can it continue to work? And that's question one. And the second question is, if it doesn't work, you know, what kind of tweaks would be proposed? What are the nature of those? And then, sort of finally, what do you think of Mr. Frank's diagram? I guess those would be my three questions, you know, just three quick, quick ones for you.
President Blinsky introduced Peter Lemon. I'll defer to him on this one.
Great. Well, that's my job. Again, Peter Lemon with Kimley-Horn. So I'll try to see if I remember the three.
So first of all, do you think what they're doing is working and is helpful? And can they continue to do it?
Right.
The second one is, if it's ended up, it's not really working, what are sort of those first steps potentially you could recommend? And then finally, you know, is, what do you think of that diagram? Is that something that's feasible if we actually got to that point where everything we tried doesn't work here?
Sure. So one of the objectives when we, when we first started working with our place was to try basically clear, clear the alley so that people can circulate through the alley, access their properties, not be blocked when they're trying to access their garage or get out of their garage. And, and that is what the, the objective of the, the plan was, was to get the, the buses out of the alley in terms of when they're picking up and dropping off. And to your point, they're able to, to pull over, load and unload while not encroaching into the alley. Same with families, that they would not stop to pick up or drop off in the alley, that they would use spaces or use an area that does not encroach into the alley while they're picking up and dropping off passengers. I haven't been out to observe since they've been starting to implement their plan, but from what I'm hearing, it sounds like it's, it's working, or at least that they are able to start tracking and communicating with PACE and PACE's subcontractor that operates these, these buses, so that they can start to change that behavior and get the compliance. If the plan is followed and adhered to, we believe it should achieve that objective of keeping that alley clear and open so that people can access and circulate through the alley. If they're not, then we don't think those objectives will be met. And so at the ZBA hearing, we talked about the idea of a look-back provision, a way to go back and kind of check and enforce, kind of look back and see if, if these things are being effective over a period of days, not just looking at it one day, but a series of days. How many pickup and drop-offs do we have? How many of them, if any, are occurring in the alley? Do we see people ever being blocked or not able to access or circulate through the alley? Do we have PACE buses coming the wrong way, which has been a problem in the past as well? Things of that nature and document that. And if we think it's working, then it achieves that objective. To your point about, you know, do PACE buses belong in the alley, period, you know, that's kind of a different, I think, question, you know, that, you know, more related to the use. If we want to completely eliminate PACE buses from the alley, this plan doesn't do that. It gets them out of the alley, but they would still circulate through. So as Mr. Frank outlined, and this was an option that we, you know, we talked about way back when, and we talked about this as being a potential option. We were trying to address it operationally and not, you know, coming with a bunch of expensive brick-and-mortar solutions to this, given the amount of time. But as an option, we think the, there's about 18 feet from the back of the curb to the sidewalk, so there's room to put, you know, horizontally, there's room to put such a turnout lane, or, you know, to bump the curb back. The concept that they've put forth, I saw this evening, I think there's some tweaks to it that I would make. I don't think it, overall length is about right, but I think the tapers would be a little more abrupt. It probably doesn't need to be 13 feet deep. I would say, you know, something closer to 12 feet might make sense, so it doesn't take up quite as much of the parkway. The bus that they show on there is more the size of a school bus. The PACE buses are smaller buses. So basically, what I would want to get to is probably the same length, it would just be configured a little bit differently, and you could actually fit two buses in there at one time. I wouldn't want to be able to only fit one because if a second bus comes, then it's blocking Wilmette Avenue. But I think we could, I think it's feasible from that conceptual standpoint. We'd have to look at utilities and things like that. But, but by and large, it's a, it's a, it's a good concept to eliminate PACE buses from the alley.
Well, so going back to the, the plan as it, their plan. It's your opinion. Obviously, you can't be there every day to make sure someone's, you know, executing. But if they execute the plan and have appropriate enforcement with the parents and appropriate cooperation from PACE, it should get the bus, it should stop blocking the alley. Obviously, there's still traffic.
Correct.
But it should stop blocking. That's your opinion, that it should stop blocking the alley?
That's the objective, and if it's followed, yes. That's, that's what we feel would happen.
Okay. Questions for Mr. Lemon?
So in the plan, after the drop-off, then the idea is the PACE bus continues west. That's kind of a narrow shot down that alley and, and, but.
It's, it's an 18-foot-wide alley. It's a standard alley. I mean, it's designed to handle vehicles of that size, garbage and refuse pickup.
Yeah.
I know there's land, people might have landscaping vehicles that might come back if they need to access the rear of a property. So it's capable of handling that type. And, you know, I think the, the efforts to consolidate some of the trips and reduce the number of buses is a good one, but you know, you'd still have buses back there. But the alley is equipped to handle a vehicle that size driving through it.
And then in terms of how, what do you need to do, so that, let's say, six months from now, we wanted to know if this is working.
Sure.
What do you need to do to?
Well, what I would, what I would propose, and Mr. Manis and I have discussed this a little bit, is, you know, we would want to find a period of time, a week or so, where we would want to collect data. What I would recommend is, rather than having someone go out there each day for a week, you'd actually collect video data so that you can look over a series or a sample of multiple days, rather than finding one day where maybe something works great and not being there the next day when something goes wrong. So you want to get a series of days, you know, and then basically, you can review the periods of time where they do have the, the peak, you know, dropping off and picking up of participants. You know, probably look at a week's worth of time and focusing on those days, quantifying how many people came in, how many people picked up and dropped off, how many, if any, were in the alley or were in the parking spaces. Did you observe people engaged? If they did go in the alley, were they engaged by one of the, the active managers that are out there at that time controlling traffic?
Okay.
And, and quantifying that. And if we're having problems where people are blocking the alley, then it's something we would have to address. To your point, you know, then we would identify, depending on what the issue is, if it's, if it's simply that we just don't have enough room for the buses that are all coming at one time, then maybe we need to make sure, can we change the capacity to handle more buses? If it's the buses are encroaching into the alley, maybe we need to make that parking area, remove the wheel stops, but if we need to make it deeper, then that's an option. Or if it's going to this plan and just trying to remove the, the buses altogether. So it kind of depends on what the issue would be if it arises.
But it sounds like there are a number of, you know, levers you could pull, to use the sort of corporate analogy.
I think there's a few tweaks that you can make.
Yeah.
But really, it comes down to operationally and, and following and adhering to plan. You know, if, if those aren't really working out well, then it's really this option that Mr. Frank presented with the turnout, that I think that would, that would help address, at least what I understood to be one of the bigger issues with the, the PACE buses.
Okay. Other questions? Okay. I don't know if we need Mr. Adler again. Are there any questions for Mr. Adler? Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Don't go far, you never know, though. Okay, so at this point, I'm going to open it up to public comment.
Thank you.
I'm going to, you, oh, trustee Dodd?
I actually had some questions for PACE, if that was.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Someone said there's a PACE representative here?
Yes. Just because there was so much discussion about PACE.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the board. My name is Melinda Metzger. I'm Deputy Executive Director for PACE in charge of operations.
Wow, they sent a big shot to our meeting.
I have staff behind me, don't worry.
I need staff as well, because somebody asked me a question I don't know the answer to, so. Trustee Dodd?
I just had a couple of questions for you, just because there's obviously been a lot of concerns from the neighbors regarding PACE adherence to the traffic program. So if a, if a bus driver doesn't follow the procedures and our place is actually contacting you, what happens? And is there something, and second, that if there's multiple citations regarding a particular bus driver, what's the protocol that's followed by PACE?
Well, first of all, let me, let me back up for one second. We were contacted in.
Ma'am, would you move into the microphone a little bit? I'm sure the people in the back end hear you.
We were contacted in late July to discuss this issue. And we've been very responsive to both the village and to our place as to what we can and cannot do. Why I say what we can and cannot do? PACE provides ADA para-transit service. It's a civil right. It's something mandated by the Federal Transit Administration. So we have to follow the rules that we're required to follow. With that, we work with agencies to make sure that we give the best service we can for their clients and also the residents of the Six County area that we serve. With regard to our place, when they came to us, we sat down with them and talked about the problems. And you've heard about many of them from the other presentations that have been here. But the first thing we requested is, we want to be out of the alley. We don't like blocking alleys. We requested that the curb stops be removed so our buses could get out of the, the traffic. Once we started working on the problems and getting the solutions done so that we could get out of the traffic of the alley, we asked our place, if they have a problem, call us. They have a direct line to one of my managers. When they call us, my manager will then talk to the contractor, MV Transportation. That is our contractor. They stand in our shoes, but we are responsible. So once we get that information, we go talk to the contractor. All of our vehicles have tracking systems on it. We know if the vehicle's there, we know how long it's been there, we know who the driver is. So we get down to that level. And we will go meet with the contractor, have him come back out, retrain the driver, and get the situation solved. And so that's what's been happening. If it continues, there will be progressive discipline.
Thank you. Any other questions, trustee?
Yes. Do you have the same drivers, driving the same route, so they're, or how does that work? No, doesn't work that way. That would make it simple. Yeah. No. The, the area that is covered by this contractor is really the whole North Cook area, so up to Lake County, out west to about Arlington Heights, down south to the Skokie area, and east to the lake here. So the way this works, ADA para-transit service is a call-in service. You call the day before, and we need to schedule the rides. So what happens is, you call the day before, we get all the trips in the system, and then we schedule out the rides. We're trying to group rides together. So every day, it's a different route. Because if you get five riders one day and you get 100 riders the next, you have to regroup it differently. We're responsible for all the ADA para-transit service within the Six County area, including the city of Chicago. So there are approximately 800 vehicles that are, are doing this service with different drivers every day.
Each day, 800?
Yep.
Wow. Trustee Kersman?
I don't know if this question would be for Ms. Gallery or for yourself, but the, the question is that in reading concerns from neighbors, idling was, was mentioned. And I'm just wondering, what are the circumstances that would necessitate a, a bus to be idling for an extended period of time beyond just the dropping off or picking up of, of an individual?
I, I think to answer your question, communications. And that's one of the things that we've worked, we're very carefully with our place on, that that we've worked, worked very carefully with our place on, that when we drop off, they have people outside. They can take the customers inside our place, and it moves very quickly. Our goal is to get in and out of the alley as quickly as possible. And our goal is to make pickups and drop-offs as, as quickly as possible, because it's efficiency for us.
Yes.
So, so it's just communicating, and we are communicating very well with them now.
Thank you. Great. Thank you so much for making the trip and coming out tonight.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions for staff or the applicant at this time? Okay.
So, we're going to move into public comment, and I'm going to use a procedure that I've used previously in meetings where we've had large audiences, and that is allowing people to raise their hand to simply show their support or their opposition to the, the application. I do that for two reasons. One is, it, it does save time. So, if there are folks who would be satisfied raising their hand rather than coming up and expressing their opinion to the board, it will save some time. Also, there may be people in the audience tonight that aren't comfortable addressing people in a public setting, and this also allows them to register their point of view without making the effort to come up and, and speak in front of us. So, of course, it is voluntary, if you'd like to raise your hand or not. You're not required to do that. And after that, everybody will have the opportunity to also address the board. We will note for the record the number of hands raised. So,
there. And I'll ask anyone who would like to register a vote in opposition to the application,
at this point in time, I would ask that people who are here in the audience that are in favor of the application, please raise their hands.
All right, you got this side, you got that side, and I'll count them all. please raise their hand. So, I count eight. And for the record, let the record reflect that. Okay. Now, I will
Yeah, I got thirty-five.
Okay.
I got thirty-five.
I got twenty-five.
ask whether you're speaking in opposition or in favor of the application. If you'd
Okay.
Thirty-eight.
Keep your hands up for just a minute more. I'm sorry. like to actually address the board, please raise your hand. Okay. So, let me remind people of the village's rules for public comment during a board
I got thirty-seven as well.
meeting. So, in order to give every person a fair and equal opportunity to address the board, each person is allotted three minutes to speak, and individuals will be allowed to address the board only once tonight. As a matter of courtesy to those who are waiting to also address the board and to allow, you know, people to limit the wait that they will take, please be concise and try to avoid repetition in your comments. If another speaker has already said what you plan to say, you certainly can just say, "I agree with that person." Mr. Frenzer, the village manager here to my right, will be watching the time for you, and he'll let you know when you have a minute and thirty seconds, and then when your time is up. So, and it also, look, I'd ask everybody to be considerate of each other this evening. Please be respectful of each other's opinions. Refrain from commenting unless it's your turn at the podium. And importantly, please refrain from applauding or making comments or otherwise noise. And when you're at the podium, please address your comments to the board and not to others in the room. So, with that, let me start, I'll start on this side. Who are the people that want to speak on this side? If you would come line up at the podium. If you're on this side, come on, line up.
Stand at the podium, I'm sorry.
Yeah, stand at the podium. Tell us who you are, where, where you live, and you're definitely going to have to lean down into that microphone. You're one of those tall guys.
Right, okay.
Welcome.
Good evening, guys. For the record, my name is Sterling Humphrey, and I am a current employee at our place for the last eight years. And I just want to say that I have been in that community of Willmet for the last twenty, twenty-five years. I was a graduate of Lila Academy High School, class of ninety-four, and I also, too, have worked in this community over seventeen years. I just want to say that it's been an honor and a privilege to work in this community. And also, too, we're making a difference at our place. For the last eight years I have been at our place, I have seen a lot of growth, have seen a lot of this, power, coworkers that I work with every day. We, we work hard and diligent in what we do, and we are making a meaningful difference in our community here in Willmet. Just on the behalf of our place, I just want to say that we, over the last two and a half months, we have made tremendous, tremendous strides in trying to make this work for all of the community there, right there on ten-twenty Forest Avenue. I personally, I, I talk to residents in the area when I come to work every day, just cordially say hi to everyone and just try to make things work to the best of our ability. And I just want to say, we're making tremendous efforts to make this thing work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Kathy DiVincenzo, and my son Scott is a participant at our place. We chose to move to Willmet nineteen years ago, both for the excellent schools and also for its inclusive atmosphere for all of our children. Our son Scott had a great experience growing up here. He went to Central School. He was a soccer player. He did scouts. He did Special Olympics at New Trier, and he's always been a part of the commu, the community. He has found a community at our place now that he's twenty-four, and its proximity to his home and downtown Willmet allows him to participate in a variety of programs and a very full life, the same thing that we want for our other children. Peg Critsler, who's one of the church members who wrote just a beautiful letter in support of our application, I'm going to steal her words. "Our place was founded by parents who wanted a community for their children who have fewer options than most. Please allow them that community." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Pam Sheridan-Papano. I serve on the Our Place Board of Directors, and my son Keenan has been a participant at our place for eight years. Our family's been fortunate to call Willmet home for the last thirty-three years. Our children attended St. Francis and District Thirty-Nine Schools, Loyola, and New Trier. And we moved to Willmet and stayed in Willmet because we found it to be a, a great cooperative community and very supportive of families with special needs children. We're a community of diverse thinkers, and, but our residents are commonly civil and cooperative. We, we watch out for people. We take extra care driving because there are kids on bikes, crossing guards, walking small children on their way to school, school buses that stop frequently, and elderly walking across Sheridan Road at Plaza de Lago. I never hear people honking to hurry these people along. We're really very civil. I had a lot to say, but I know, limited in time. I just, I saw the trailer for the new film about Fred Rogers from Mr. Rogers Neighborhood. Mr. Rogers has been gone from the screen for about fifteen years, but his example of neighborliness is a great one. He recognized that the people in the neighborhood are not just the people living in the houses. They're the people who serve the community. They deliver the mail. They work in the community, or they visit. So, I'd like this board to ask WWMRD, what would Mr. Rogers do? I know it's your responsibility to police traffic and, and set the standards, and I think you should hold our place to our commitment to keep the alleys clear. If I lived down an alley, I, I wouldn't want anybody blocking the alley.
You have one minute.
Of course not. And I can say, I'm there four days a week with my son. I drop off. He does not ride a PACE bus, but they have made an extraordinary effort. Our staff is out there in those little reflective vests, and they, they really have made a huge effort. And the, the buses are completely out of the alley, and people are able to get up and down the alley. It's been very heartening to hear from a few of the neighbors who initially
Thirty seconds.
Okay, one more minute. Who are really concerned about the buses, and some of them have actually come to us and said, "Things are better." So, WWMRD, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hello. I'm Patrick Duffy. I live at nine-thirty-two Illinois Road, and I am on the Zoning Board of Appeals. I am here, because I just want to be on the record there, about a misunderstanding that happened during this case. When the zoning board made the recommendation, and granted, it's a recommendation to the village board, to pass this, or we approve this, with the six-month lookback, I personally, and I know from a couple of other members of the board in conversations, thought that this would come back to our board for a public meeting as opposed to going to administrative review. I guess I just want to be on the record that that was our understanding as we passed it, and it is just a recommendation, and you don't have to follow our recommendations. I also wanted to point out that originally, I believe, the way that we proceeded through this was we denied the application and then revoted on it with the provision for the lookback, so that it came to you...
I think it was that you wanted a six-month lookback. I think, I think Mike Boyer said that he voted against it because it just said, "Look up without timeframe," and then it was, "Look up with timeframe."
Then it became a six-month. Is that how it went? Okay, I seem to remember it a little differently. Okay. Well, I just wanted to leave it on the record that I would, I don't know that I would have voted for it, so the vote would have been three to three against it if we thought that this was going to be administrative review as opposed to a public meeting like the meeting that we had to bring all the information to the surface. So, thank you, guys.
You are, you are on the record. Thank you.
Hi, I am Marilyn Grodrian. I'm the moderator at the community church. That's what we call our president. But I've decided that I kind of like the term moderator, because conflicts come up, and I think it's my job to make a solution that everybody can live with. That means, in my mind, that I must remain reasonable, thoughtful, and kind. I've already written to each of you, so I won't take up a lot of your time, but I do want to take a moment and tell you how the church feels about our place. In our church, we call our place our ministry partner. In addition to sharing a building, we share goals, like making the world a better place, making lives better lives. We are warm and welcoming. So are they. We are respectful. So are they. They have met with our leaders and with the neighbors to listen to and address the neighbors' concerns. They've already responded to neighborhood complaints by making significant changes. For example, the Our Place staff parks by the train station and walks to the building, so they're not taking up parking areas near the church. I find our place's presence in our building inspiring and important. I want them to stay, to continue the valuable services they provide to young people and their families who have outgrown what the local schools offer them. There is so much, they do so much more than daycare. I share the offense of using that term. There's a lot more going on but, than just daycare. And the Beacon recently referred to our place in this way, quote, "There is much to celebrate at our place, a Willmet-based nonprofit that creates meaningful lives for teens and adults with developmental disabilities."
You have one minute.
Please vote in favor of their special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Hi, thank you. My name's Rich Ramlow, and I live at seven-twenty-four twelfth Street. And I don't have a lot to add about what our place is doing positively for the community. I think it's fairly obvious, and people can talk about it much better than I can. But I want to talk about why I live in Willmet and why institutions like our place and why churches are important to our community. I've lived or worshipped in Willmet since nineteen seventy-eight. I lived on golf terrace in a rented room while finishing my undergraduate degree at Northwestern. Behind us was a golf course, and the L was a block away. National Lewis at the time was just up the street. Later, I lived on Greenwood, a half a block from Harper School. The presence of these public facilities was not always convenient for me, but I wouldn't trade them away. They're a large part of the fabric of a community, and I found this to add a vibrancy to our village that made me want to live here. The community church of Willmet, my church, has been in this, has been in its current home for nearly one hundred years. And at its peak, there were four hundred to five hundred people attending the church as members. It shrunk, it's grown, and shrunk again, as have many churches, but it's a part of Willmet, and our community is the better for it. The issues surrounding traffic and activity are not new, not when you consider the entire history of the church. Four hundred people parked up and down the streets in the nineteen fifties and sixties, and the cars were a lot bigger than, I think. They had meetings and events midweek. I, I, I don't see that the institution of a church has changed a whole lot in that regard. The hope for all churches is that their facilities are used for the good of the community. No one can dispute the good provided by our place over the last ten years. We at the church are proud of the spiritual, the special ministry to these underserved residents of Willmet and the neighboring communities. We think its program is a great example of how churches can react to a changing environment, and if a church can't house this ministry, I think that's a significant tear in that fabric I referred to before. I ask the trustees to continue to consider the historical usage and rights of a church to be a living, public facility, and to allow the church to continue to share our space with our space. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome, sir.
Hello, I'm David Van Brekel. I'm resident, nine-eighteen Cornell Street. I'm also the, one of the pastors at the community church of Willmet. Those are two of my members that just spoke. I, I just want to, I just want to reiterate what our moderator said, and I know I saw some of the letters that came through from, from some of our members and participants as well, that, that we do see our place as, as a ministry partner, not just someone who's renting space. We see them as an extension of the ministry that we do and provide in the community. And, and that's, that's been reflective in, in several ways. I would say that just beyond sharing some very common things that, that we do within the community, it's also shaped the way that we've made decisions around the church. So, for instance, since I've been there, we wound up putting in money for our fire safety, life safety in the building because of our place. That was, that's in the space. We wound up having to upgrade our, our elevator because of our place in the space, and that was, those are decisions that we, we sat down and had conversations, as you can imagine happens in a church, and, and made those decisions. We, we wound up, even as a congregation, putting the priority of outside lighting for safety at night while our place was there, over lighting in our own sanctuary space. So, I, I thought that, that spoke a lot. To answer Mr. Pierce's questions earlier, too, there are, there are things that happen in our church while our, our place is meeting. We have, we have made, we had to make some hard decisions as a congregation with some of our other space shares, because as our place started looking at drop-off and pickup times and best traffic flows, we had to let some of our space shares go who couldn't line up with some of those as well, so it was just adding to the congestion. Even recently, we had one of our staff members who was upset that, that she couldn't use the sanctuary anytime she wanted on Friday, and we said, "Well, you, you can use the sanctuary anytime you want, but, but we have to talk through when that start and stop happens as well, because we want to make sure that we are, we are honoring the traffic agreements as well." So, I would say, as a resident, we have kids, our own house. I, I've been, I've been so grateful being in Willmet, because I've seen just, just the patience and...
Thirty seconds.
...the support from those, others in the community, and I'm glad that we can provide that support for the participants at our place as well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay. So, this side, anyone who'd like to speak, please queue up in front of the podium. Welcome, sir.
Good evening. My name is Stan Figura.
You're going to have to, yeah, you're going to have to get into the microphone.
Good evening. My name is Stan Figura. I live at ten-twenty-five Elmwood. I've lived there...
Even recently, we had one of our staff members who was upset that, that she couldn't use the sanctuary anytime she wanted on Friday and we said, "Well, you, you can use the sanctuary anytime you want, but, but we have to talk through when that start and stop happens as well because we want to make sure that we are, we are honoring the traffic agreements as well." So, I would say as a resident, we have kids, our own house, I, I've been, I've been so grateful being in Willmet because I've seen just, just the patience and
Thirty seconds.
and the support from those, others in the community. And I'm glad that we can provide that support for the participants at Our Place as well. Thank you.
Thank you sir. Okay, so this side, anyone who'd like to speak, please queue up in front of the podium.
Welcome sir.
Good evening, my name is Stan Figura.
You're gonna have to, yeah, you're gonna have to get into the microphone.
Good evening, my name is Stan Figura. I live at 1025 Elmwood. I've lived there.
I'm guessing, can you hear him in the back? No, so you're really gonna have to like put your, move into one microphone only instead of trying to be in the middle.
Good evening, my name is Stan Figura. I live at 1025 Elmwood. I've lived there since 1992. I am one of the abutting property owners that is most impacted by what, by the situation at our pla, at Our Place. I would like to answer President Polinski's questions, the three questions that were posed regarding the, the use and, and the plan. And I'd start by saying that the, the plan, our, the traffic management plan has been a moving target. At the Ju, at the July 18 ZBA hearing, Mr. Frank commented that the ink wasn't even dry on the plan, that it was being modified right up until the, 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 the moments of the hearing. And what we've heard today from Mr. Frank's presentation, that there are all these options that we can do and we could do this and we can do that and then we can, we can even put in a curb cut. And I think by, by running through all those options to this board, Mr. Frank concedes that the plan on its face doesn't satisfy the requirements of the zoning ordinance. Now, the plan that was described at the ZBA hearing last month, well, actually if I could just back up for a second.
It's yours for a minute, you can do whatever you want with it.
This relates to seven parking spaces between Willmet Avenue and the church off the alley. Ever since the ZBA meeting last December, Our Place has been managing vehicles and buses, trying to use those seven spaces as, as a, as a drop-off.
One minute.
They, I would, I would ask, I would ask the board that if you cut me off after three minutes, I think you'd be violating my due process rights as an abutting landowner.
It's, sir, you have three minutes. We're fair to everyone.
Then the, the, the plan isn't working. There are buses that are, that are, that, that will back out of the alley onto Willmet Avenue. Not if, but when. I've seen it, my wife's seen it, Mr. Frank has seen it. If another vehicle, if a, if a garbage truck comes down that alley, if a service vehicle is in that alley, buses are going to back out onto Willmet Avenue. The village is on notice, PACE is, PACE is here, PACE is on notice. There's a huge liability issue that the plan does not address because it does not remove buses out of the alley. There's another issue that Our Place raised about discriminatory conduct taken by the village against Our Place in its attempts to relocate in other space in the village. That is putting, I think that's what the board should, should, should look at. There are others, there's other space in the village that is, that, that could accommodate this program, including the, the Kurt Sophia space that Our Place looked at. There's 3,900 square feet available there and including the former backyard barbecue space, there's 4,000 square feet there. Space that could accommodate bus drop-offs that, that do not put third of 60, it was 60 last month, now it's 30 buses this month, but who knows? We, we haven't seen that. And the plan that, that was presented at the ZBA hearing that Mr. Lemon testified to called for buses pulling into those spots diagonally, as, as many as two buses at a time, so that there are seven spaces there. Each bus takes up to two spaces. So if two buses are, are in those spaces in the alley, there are room for three, three private vehicles to also pull in or park next to those buses. Our Place's plan doesn't remove traffic from the, from the public right away. It's unlike Loyola that takes all the traffic into their parking lot and circulates through their parking lot. It's unlike Ronald Knox that created a road around the building to get everybody off the street. That's not happening here.
We've afforded you an extra minute and a half, sir. So you had four and a half minutes. Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Jeff Leder, live at the corner of 10th and Elmwood. I've spoken at the other zoning committees and when we spoke, I think the key thing that I heard at the last hearing on the zoning committee was this is, this site is not right for it. We all say yes to Our Place, but the site is not right. This is not sustainable for what it can do. We heard quote unquote from the zoning committee themselves, trying to take a 10, 10-pound sack of flour, put it into a five-pound place. Again, we say yes to Our Place, but you know, for over eight years, we've been calling the church, we've been talking to the police, we've been reaching out, nothing happened. Back in December, right before Christmas, the first zoning meeting comes up, clear instructions, meet with the neighbors. And I'm hearing tonight, oh yeah, we're reaching out to the neighbors. It happened one time, it was the week before the 4th of July, only after a continuance on the June meeting because I had met with the neighbors. And the one meeting we have, yes, it was cordial, it was about an hour, but we show up and they've hired an attorney, the next week, guess what? I mean, this is like Trumpville. We're seeing a letter in the Beacon saying we're bad neighbors and all this other stuff starts escalating. I don't know how that's good neighbors. At any rate, and it's a church, do unto others. That's what should be happening here and it isn't. Now, in the month of August, we're right there, I work from home, I see a lot of things during the day, I see the people taking pictures, I see a lot more activity. You're darn right, in the month of August, it's been a lot better, but guess what? It's summer vacation time. Over eight years, we've been talking about this, we've been living with it. And I don't care, I don't think it's right when people come from the West Coast, which they did at the last zoning meeting, speaking out against bad neighbors in this issue. I don't think it's right, people from other blocks. This is one block and when I hear this vote 61 or whatever it is to eight, it's one block of neighbors. We all talk about how great Willmet is, we should be neighbors. We shouldn't even be here. This should have been the church sitting down and saying, "This is great guys, we've got a great program, we all like it, but there's one, one block, one alley of neighbors and that's all this is about and we should really be addressing that." You can vote for Our Place tonight and that's great, we're all for you, but I think you have a responsibility to us as neighbors to look at this traffic problems and the numbers are 60 buses a week. Yes, I agree that it's been better, but it's only been three weeks and there are three summer weeks with vacations. Dark weather comes, weather comes, changes.
Thirty seconds.
I don't think this is sustainable and that's why I'm against it. And I'm not against Our Place or any of the people. I think it's a great program and I wish there'd be better neighbors and meet with us more regularly and we wouldn't have to escalate it to where it is. Thanks everyone.
Thank you sir. Welcome.
Thank you. My name's Vicky Tisoni. I live on Long Road in Glenview, East Glenview. My son Travis has Down Syndrome. He's 26 and we moved to my house in 1990. He was born in 91, do the math. He attended the high school at New Trirr with their fabulous transition program that's in place. At that time as well, he was a member of Our Place, started as a freshman, I think in the second year that Our Place was in its conception years. Our Place has provided a venue for my son to continue seeing his friends that he's made from New Trirr in that close proximity of his New Trirr Township. We live, he works at the Panera Bread Store in Willmet. He's got shifts there four days a week. It provides him a level of independence walking from work to Our Place and now he lives in Willmet with Scott DiVincenzo and two other young men also who graduated from New Trirr. I look to you to continue Our Place in where it is, to vote for us. Where we are is just an ideal situation, not just for my son, but I would like other children, young adults, I can't call them kids anymore, young adults to have the same opportunity, the same opportunity that my son did as a disabled young man who now can live and work and play in his own community. I do love that. I hope that you will vote for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Mr. President and the board, my name is Wes Cornwell. I live down the street from Our Place and the church in Willmet on Forest Avenue. While I echo many of the comments that were just raised in terms of the opportunities that Our Place affords to its participants, I do believe that the site is not sufficient for its intended use. With the size and volume of traffic of the program, the, Mr. President, when you asked earlier, is the plan working? The one thing that I haven't heard come up tonight is the safety concerns that all the traffic causes within the neighborhood and, and within the alley. There are not less than 15 to 20 kids that regularly use this alley for biking, for basketball, for its intended use. And with all of the buses, the traffic coming through, we as parents have to constantly monitor how that is being used by our children to make sure that they stay safe. Now, that's expected of any parent, I, I would acknowledge that. I'm not going to send my kids off into the neighborhood and just let them run free, but we have to be very careful with how the buses are coming through, so that's one point. The second point is there's a lot of vehicular congestion that happens in the surrounding area by virtue of people coming to the program, people coming down Forest and using it as an alternate for Lake Avenue. And, and with all of that, you have a number of different vehicles both in the alley and on Forest Avenue that are trying to navigate around each other because the streets are packed, the alley is packed. And, and so my concern is not about the actual congestion and getting in and out of my garage, it's about the concern that I have for my children and our residents around us. Forest is a safety route to and from Central School. We've had a number of different accidents at the corner of Willmet Avenue and Forest, given the speed at which people come down Willmet Avenue. Those accidents are very dangerous. We've seen somebody die recently as a result of that.
One minute.
And finally, there is a participant, if I'm getting off of a bus the way it's coming through the alley westbound, I have to exit the PACE bus into the flow of traffic within the alley. That can't be good for the, the participants of the program to be getting out into the flow of traffic in the alley with cars trying to navigate around buses. Our Place has only partial ability to control and implement the program. It relies on the performance of others that we've heard tonight. So while I'm glad they're working with their partners,
Thirty seconds.
they cannot control all of that. Several members of the zoning board pointed out that they would not approve a new plan that would allow buses to come down an alley. It's not the intended use to have buses coming through alleys. So that was pointed out in our last meeting. No one has adequately addressed how this plan would affect housing values in the area. I think that's a requirement. So in my opinion, I think the board should disapprove of this plan and appropriately and consistently apply the standards for a special use permit to other residents and Our Place and other businesses in this community and clearly look and see if all of those have been met. I'll just make one last point in favor.
I'm inspired, please.
One, one last quick point. I, I don't believe that if the board does reject Our Place's special use permit, that they should have to immediately vacate this space. I think we should work with them as a community to adequately find a space that works for them, for their size, their growth, their use, and the needs of its participants. Thank you very much.
Thank you sir. Welcome.
Hi, my name is David Kreising.
Let me, let me just, anybody else who wants to speak, please get in line. Ma'am, you are the last one to speak, right there. Okay? Thank you.
Hi, my name is David Kreising. I'm the father of Wes Kreising, who's a 28-year-old resident of Evanston, who has been attending Our Place for six years since he aged out of Evanston Township High School. We're here to talk about the traffic issue and you're hearing a lot of testimony about the quality of life that Our Place makes possible for its participants. The reason those two issues have been brought together is that this is an existential issue for Our Place. You can't reject this and assume that Our Place can continue to operate in Willmet. It is uniquely located in a way that serves the participants in the program and Our Place's efforts to find alternative places in which to conduct its operations so far have turned up nothing. The real question here between Our Place and the neighbors is, has Our Place operated in good faith since these traffic issues were brought to the attention of Our Place? I think the answer to that is an unequivocal yes. As a participant, as the father of a participant who frequently drops off and picks up our son, I have seen the restrictions steadily increased on, on parents to the point that we just, as of the last, last round of participant, participation, we had to sign commitments that would yield us being thrown out of the program if we don't comply with the traffic regulations. Staff is always there during drop-off and pickup and the bus routing system that was put into place had, is working. At the zoning meeting, there was questions about could you get PACE to cooperate with this? PACE can't control individual drivers, et cetera, et cetera. I think not only has PACE been responsive to the issues, but their presence here tonight at a high level of executive leadership indicates that PACE not only is engaged in this problem,
Seven minutes ago.
but is committed, is committed to solving it. If you allow this to pass with a six-month look back, you are able to see whether or not the program will continue to work. The questions that neighbors are raising about, is this a temporary fix, can be answered over a six-month period. With the improvements that we've seen in this short time, it's evident that Our Place has put in plan, in place, a plan that is working. And after six months, you'll know whether you have made a change in culture or just a quick fix. Our Place has acted in good faith in response to the concerns brought forth to this unique community in Willmet and I would ask you to give Our Place the opportunity to prove that its initial and very positive response to these concerns can be sustained. Thank you very much.
Thank you sir. Welcome.
Hi there. My name is Linda Stern. I live at 1708 Lake Avenue in Willmet. My son Josh is 29 years old and he's been attending Our Place since it began. I have somewhat of a parallel situation where we live in that I live on a busy street where we have alley access and my son Josh works every morning in Glenview and takes a PACE bus every day to work. So, every weekday. So there is a bus, a PACE bus that comes into our alley and right when everybody's going to work and kids are on their way to school. And we also live right near St. Joseph's School on that same alley, as you may know, it ends like at a T if you're coming, right. So, there are just a couple things I wanted to say. One is our neighbors have never complained to us after nine years using the PACE bus that there's been a problem with blocking. If, and I also have had neighbors before with lots of children and we've all discussed the fact that the alley isn't really a safe place for children to play regardless of whether or not there's a bus there because there is traffic. A car hitting a child is just as bad as a bus hitting a child. And that's why we have such wonderful parks in Willmet and why we have people put basketball courts inside their, their yard. Our neighbor opposite us did that. They extended their back fence a little bit into the alley space so that they could build a basketball court inside their yard to play. So, I find that the safety issue, nobody should be playing in the street where cars go on a regular basis. That's why we have parks. And so, and the other thing is, my son's being able to attend Our Place in downtown Willmet allows him to not be shunted off to the side to an office park or some other out-of-the-way place, which is typically what has happened with people with disabilities in our world. And the fact that he's part of the community and can walk to downtown businesses, et cetera, during his afternoons at Our Place means he's, feels part of Willmet where he has lived
Thirty seconds.
since he was three. So, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome.
Hi, Mike, I have a question. First of all, my name's Cecilia Clark, I live at 1025 Elmwood Avenue. I do, first I do have a more of a question. One of the neighbors, the Martins, who were not able to attend today because they were out of town or actually they may have just landed at the airport. Emma, she asked if I could read her letter to the board that was included in the packet and I don't know if that's, I wanted to ask if I can do that.
You have, you have three minutes, go ahead.
Yes, okay. "To the Board of Trustees, we appreciate your time in reading this letter. As we live next door to the church in question, this is an issue that directly and significantly impacts us and our family. We are unable to attend the meeting and we are grateful for the chance to be heard. We are disappointed that we have reached this point, but we, we remain convinced that Our Place presents too big of a drain on the community resources to be allowed to continue at this location. Because they inhabit a non-conforming space, which was only ever intended to provide space for the church's congregants per their special use permit and variance from 1989, the addition of this program has caused unmanageable upset on our block. We have detailed the destruction of property and the substantial We have detailed the destruction of property and the substantial dangers this program has created in previous letters included in the file, but still the village does not seem to hear our concerns. This program offers close to fifty hours of programming over six days of the week, with participants ranging from eighty to a hundred, staff upwards of fifteen, and volunteers of over a hundred. They are occupying unpermitted a building with a total of ten designated parking spaces. This creates substantial difficulties on all of the surrounding homes, from parking to access to safety. They have tried to move the parking problems around, but it simply creates new problems in other locations. They have tried to control the alley traffic, but it remains a real concern. Many vehicles have resorted to honking their horns as they go through the alley, probably because they see the safety challenges of this setup as well, but creating a new nuisance in addition to the old ones. Last week, emergency vehicles were called to Forest, and they had to double park in the middle of the street for several minutes because the program had cars on both sides of the street, including the street in front of this neighbor's home. The road was impassable. All of this is how things function with the program as it is today. They are continually growing and have made no promises to curb that growth. In fact, they have stated that they continue to add participants. All of these programs, problems, will become exponentially compounded. In addition, their plan does not take into consideration when other people are using the church.
You have thirty seconds.
Congregants may wish to visit the church during the day and park in the lot, throwing our place's whole system out of whack. That's pretty much the basic, but I will add that I am also home during the day. I am hearing these pace buses back up within the alley. I have seen them back up onto Wilmett Avenue. They are also, as they are unloading, they are unloading participants very often into the alley traffic. They are honking their horns as they exit the alley, creating other noise, additional nuisance for noise. Plus, I will say, even within the alley, to exit out of the parking spots, they are backing up within the alley. They're not going out and then proceeding, so we have that noise. And I will finally say, they are exiting onto a small, narrow, brick-lined street, onto Levin Street, where often there are very, the sightlines are also not very bad, and which is adjacent to a safe walk to Central School. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi.
Welcome.
Thank you for taking my, listening to me. My name is Carleen Jolz. I live at 416 Laverne Avenue in Wilmett. My son, Tim Jolz, will be twenty-five on Saturday. He has Down Syndrome and has been at our place for about two, two and a half years. I bring him there four days a week at different times during the day and pick him up four days a week at different times during the day with his schedule. What our place has done the past month is, has incredibly, I've not seen a pace bus block the alleyway ever in the times I'm there, which is two times a day, four times a week. I have not seen any cars blocking. They park. There's two members of the staff out there every time there are people coming and going, picking up kids at our place. I haven't heard any horns honking, so I must be there at the wrong times because that's news to me. But they have done an incredible job. The staff is out there in orange vests and directing people to make sure they're parked well, so just in case someone doesn't get it. So they're doing a good job working with the staff people. So I must just be there at the exact right times because I just don't see any of these problems. Also, people who bring their kids to our place are concerned about people, so they don't go speeding down the alleyway. I don't see any cars speeding down. I see neighbors coming out of their garage, following down the alleyway, not speeding either. I see some workers, some construction workers speeding up and down the alleyways or the streets. But most, I don't, I don't see a safety issue. And I have a son that I would not let get out of a car and just walk out by himself because he doesn't pay attention. But I still don't see a safety issue, and I'm always watching. So that's all I wanted to say.
Hey, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
All right. So we're concluding public comment now. It is 10:38. Do we need a, like, five-minute break here? So let's have a recess. We'll reconvene at 10:45.
Okay, um, public comments ended, I guess I'll, I will ask the applicant if they have any final words, and then we'll move into talking about, um, the ordinance and, uh, discussion. Welcome back, Mr. Frank.
Thank you. Um, there was, there was really only one thing, or maybe two things I wanted to respond to. Uh, well, maybe three things. Um, one is, I know your question number two, uh, Mr. President, was, well, what's a, what kind of thoughts did somebody have about if there was a return to the examination of the plan and what could be done? We, I just wanted to highlight that that did come up in discussions with your, uh, village, uh, traffic consultant, and we did put in our plan as an example, an example of something else that could be looked at down the road as possibly staggered pickups and, and later things. We put that in our materials to you. That, I mean, that's just an example of something else that could happen. The other thing I wanted to respond to, um, Deputy Executive Director Metzger's appearance this night. We really appreciate that, and, and, and I want to highlight again that, that we only started contacting PACE, uh, six weeks ago. And, and, and so already, and we, I want to reiterate what she said, they've been incredibly responsive. They've had people constantly coming out, talking to our place. They had no idea, the folks at PACE had no idea that this was an issue for the neighborhood. And so, and, and, and I guess I would like to maybe take this opportunity to thank, uh, your former village president, Mr. Canning. I don't know if all of you know this, but he's the North Shore's representative to PACE, and, and I didn't know that at the time, and he's the one who put me in touch with Deputy Executive Director Metzger. And so collectively, you know, you know as well, better than anybody, you know, his, his love and care for the community, and so he immediately jumped on this and did what he could, uh, to help, you know, address the issue. And so I want to, I want to thank Deputy Executive Metzger and her people. They've been incredibly responsive, and we really do believe that if these communications, not just with them, but with the neighbors, you know, continue, that things will get better. Um, and, and finally, that's the last thing I wanted to, to, to say, which is, um, I said at the beginning, the goal here is to make things better. Uh, we think things have gotten better. You heard some people say, things have gotten better. I think Trustee Pierce, you raised a great question that we've asked ourselves repeatedly, and it came up, uh, at the zoning board meeting, and I was just talking at the break to the, to the chairman of the ZBA, you know, you asked the question, well, okay, we do a look back, how do we know if it's working? You know, what's the, what's the measurement? And that's a great question, um, but I, I think we can address it. It's not gonna, the answer isn't perfect. It's, it's, you know, that there's no violations, there's no problems. The plan itself, whether it's families, or whether it's PACE bus drivers, it assumes there are going to be issues, and that's why there are procedures put in place. You ask, uh, Trustee Dodd, you know, what happens if something comes up? It, it's almost assumed that of course there'll be issues, um, because that's what the plan assumes. It's no different than your own traffic and parking code and getting ready for this evening. I was looking at your traffic and parking code. It's 65 pages long. That doesn't mean you don't have traffic issues, you don't have parking issues, you don't have, you don't have citations issued. You do. It's a plan to always manage, control, and make things better. That's all we're hoping to do here. That's it. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Frank. Are there any questions for any staff members, or the applicant, or anyone at this point?
I, I-
Trustee Pierce.
Yeah, one, I guess it would be for John. I'm not sure who it would go to. Our, our place has been at this location for many years, is my understanding. And then my guess is they just recently realized they needed a special use. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, and so, it, it went along for seven, eight, or eight years, and you weren't getting lots of complaint issues about PACE, or whomever. But now, now that, you know, we're aware of, of the various issues, it, it's become the topic, right? Is that fair?
Correct.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's my only question.
I have a question, um, possibly to, um, our Assistant Village Manager, Mike.
Is, is this about the accidents?
Yes.
The village engineer's on that dress.
Oh, great. Thank you.
That was my question, too.
Oh, go ahead if you want to ask.
No, 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 go ahead. You can ask it.
I just had a question for you, um, two things. One, um, a couple of, um, neighbors in the community, um, neighbors on Forest mentioned, um, traffic and, um, accidents on Willmet and Forest at the corner there. I just wanted to get a sense of, um, the frequency of accidents there relative to other. Is that considered a very unsafe intersection relative to other intersections within our community?
Uh, I'm aware that the police department did review all the accidents at Forest and Willmet, and throughout some of the adjacent neighborhoods, and they did classify this intersection as a low accident, uh, intersection with about three accidents per year over the previous five-year period.
Okay.
Uh, Willmet Avenue does carry over 4,000 vehicles per day. Uh, so, you know, with that and the traffic we get on, uh, Forest, it'd be considered, you know, a moderately traveled intersection. Some of our higher, uh, traveled intersections, we can get 20 to 40 accidents per year. Uh, so we would consider this a low accident intersection. And I guess what's most important to note is, when we pulled the accident data, there were no accidents that occurred at Willmet and the entrance of the alley.
Great, great. Thank you.
Thank you. That was my question as well. Okay, any, any further questions?
Yes.
Trustee Curtis.
Uh, just to clarify from our meeting materials, that a six-month look back did not begin with any zoning board activity. It would start if that's how we decide to move as a village board.
We can, we can decide whatever we want to do.
And so, I guess what I'm, I mean, yeah, that's one way to go about it. Um, I guess what I'm trying to clarify is, for residents who've spoken about the seasonality aspect to it, and how the previous several weeks or months may not have been reflective, um, whether, um, you know, I think it, I guess to the idea of a six-month, um, you know, that would cover several seasons, and the fact that it would not be expressly over the summer, I think it would bode well for getting an accurate depiction of how well the, the plan is being implemented.
Yeah, I agree, I agree. And I think that's, that's, once we were done with our questions for the staff, that's where I was going to head in terms of talking about potential amendments, um, to the motion, because the motion did not, and I think appropriately, include the zoning board's recommendation necessarily, but, um, given that the applicant has offered up, um, you know, that, uh, a six-month look back to make sure they're implementing the traffic management plan, um, and, you know, to have the village engineer sort of be the, the arbiter on that, which, um, as Mr. Frank alluded to in his comments, is very similar to what we, uh, the conditions that we posed, impose upon Loyola Academy in terms of, um, whether, evaluating whether their traffic plan, uh, was actually working once it was implemented. So, I guess that's a question I would ask the members of the board, um, if that's something we would want to, if that's an amendment we would want to make. Any thoughts?
Yeah, I, but I, but I guess I'm still confused on, I just want to make sure I understand. When you say the amendment, it's a one-time, six-month look back, or?
Well, no, I mean, look, I, I, I-
I have a few things. That's why I should probably have a spot on that one.
No, I mean, it's, it's, it is, it is a one-time look back, but to me, this seems like a very fluid situation, um, in terms of enrollment and, um, compliance and the like. And I think it's important, you know, that the neighbors know that there's always a line to the Community Development Department if there are issues, and should there be a major change, I mean, I think, I think, my opinion, that traffic management is an important element for all of our institutions in the village. There's no such thing as perfection, and a church on Sunday, there's going to be cars in the street. That's the way it works. And if you are next to a school at 3:00 in the afternoon, there's going to be cars parked up all along the street, around the corner, and down the block. That's how it works, and that's part of living next to these types of institutions. But that's not to say that six months, okay, it's been working, and now throw out the parking management plan, we don't care anymore, and there's, there's no recourse for the neighbors to come back to the village and say, they're not living up to their end of the bargain. So I guess, Mr. Stein, can we condition our approval on, in essence, an effective implementation of a traffic management plan, whatever that may or may not be? That's sort of a condition to the use.
Absolutely. I mean, you can condition it based upon a specific plan, or a general idea such as no blocking of the alley, uh, and that doesn't, that can last, you know, as long as the use is in operation and not abandoned, not past the six months. If a PACE bus driver, uh, blocks the alley and he happens to be caught by the police department or by, you know, Community Development Department, a citation can be issued to the bus driver, as well as a citation could be issued to the actual user in violation of the special use. So there are enforcement actions that can last as long as the use is being operated. Uh, but obviously, the goal would be to try and have a management plan, a traffic management plan that, that works. You need that six-month look back, and it wouldn't die after six months. It would still continue in effect as long as the village engineer and the traffic consultant believe that it is working and continues to work.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm not suggesting by any means that there's like a guillotine over their head, and if one person, you know, blocks the alley, then it's all over. But, but I do think if our place wants to be here for 20 more years, that circumstances and things change over time, and that, that just, managing your traffic is a responsibility that you should have, um, and it doesn't end in six months or whatever. It's just, you know, you, you, you need to manage your traffic. And I don't think that's dissimilar, again, from, um, what you see at Loyola, where they have people out on the streets, um, helping traffic move and the like. Um, if all of a sudden, even if Loyola goes through its look-back process, and the village engineer says, yep, the traffic plan worked as, as planned, and then all of a sudden, all the staff members come in and never help out outside, we would consider that an issue, and I think, I think it's, there's something sort of comparable here that, you know, you have a responsibility to do your best, and we need to believe you're doing your best, and it, it needs to be a certain level of effectiveness, and if it's not, then there are other things that can be, that can be implemented. Does, I mean, I don't want this to be complicated, but can't you just say, "an effective traffic management plan"? And then that's sort of, yes, that's subject to interpretation, but that's, that's what we have an engineer for.
And, and I think also it would, could change over time. I mean, they're looking at this possible turnout lane. It could be, that would be a route they would take, and that would be part of their traffic management plan.
Right, if it's necessary.
Yeah, and if they decide that's going to be effective down the road.
But it seems like, I mean, look, nothing's going to be perfect, but it seems like from, that, you know, that the engineers, the traffic, um, our traffic consultant suggests that if they do what they say they're going to do, it should work. And, you know, there's lots of things. If, if you say you're going to do what you're going to do, things are great, um, and you have to see it in practice, but, so, I mean, I, 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 does that make sense to people, or not? Trustee Dodd.
It does. I just have a question on, um, we've had other issues in front of the board where a traffic study has been done, and, and so, isn't that inherent in, anytime we, um, approve a special use, um, if there was a traffic study done? I'm just trying, don't we assume that they're following the traffic plan, or do we not put that in? Like, we just had that for one, I thought, right off Green Bay, um-
But I, I think most of them don't have active management. You know, it's like, we're going to use, do this use, and, and, Dan, maybe you could come up, but, it's like, we're going to do this use, and this use will generate this much traffic, as opposed to, we're going to have two staff members out, and we're going to make sure buses do a certain thing.
Oh, I see what you're saying. I see what you're saying.
Most traffic, most traffic plans are just, how many more cars are going to be at this intersection as a result of this use?
Got it.
But to your point, the one you were referring to is on Green Bay Road was the Codeverse application.
Yes, that, which, right, that was-
And a key component of their management plan was also active management by staff to help facilitate movement of vehicles through their, uh, pickup and drop-off.
Got it, and so we have that in the, so I would just handle, so my perspective would be, I just, I think we should be handling it consistent with what we would do with any other application, which is, so, that's, and so if that's what we did there, or however we do it.
And so in that case, in that case, if Codeverse, a year from now, is not doing anything they said they were going to do, you know, they're in violation of their special use now.
Correct.
Or whatever approvals we gave them.
That's what I was trying to understand.
Right, yeah, yeah. So, okay. All right, so, any other thoughts of people on, Trustee Pierce?
I'd also like a little bit of dialogue about the, the size of the organization in terms of, I, I think when we approve a special use, if we approve it, it's, you know, under the assumption that this does not have a negative impact on the neighborhood. And, and I think, um, that, to me, means based on a certain size. I think other, uh, places, there have been limits on the size of an organization. And, I mean, if we approve this without that issue, and they bought the community church and wanted to expand, would they be able to do that based on the special use they have? I'm asking Jeff. Um, and, and in other words, do we have, you know, it seems to me reasonable to be talking about their, their size of their operation.
Well, when you say size of operation, I'm assuming you mean enrollment?
Yeah, and I realize it's, it's-
Facility, it could be facility at this point.
It's very difficult to define their, their enrollment. I realize it's very fluid.
I want to piggyback on what, because that's where-
Asking your question, you know, I just don't boil it down to the traffic, because I think this is coming to us, and, you know, we've heard, obviously, Willmet supports our place, and I think it's phenomenal what they built. We've all agreed with that, that it's better, much better to have our place here, um, and it's had a long run for the last 10 years. The whole point of the special use is, you know, in this case, you know, and I think what I'm hearing, if I can, uh, sort of speak for the neighbors, is, you know, they've dealt with this and, and supported it for the last nine years, and seen it go from 26 people to 99, or whatever the years, and there's been some nuances that they've put up with, and maybe haven't fully complained, but over the last couple of years, now it's at a time when they want to do something, and so we have to address it. So, for me, I, where I would only support this is if we make some of saying, when is enough's enough? When is, when can this, and I'm going to, you know, is, do they outgrow this site? Um, and I know that, you know, it might be limited on so many people during the day, and, but things change. You know, and I, if the fundraising isn't an argument for me, because anything can happen. Benefactors come out of nowhere and sometimes could support this. It's going to get, gain, gain more popularity as they have success. So I, I do worry that, when do we say that this site, they've outgrown this site? And that's what I would sort of say is, we have to have, well, we have to watch this for the neighborhood, because what it was like nine years ago is not what it's like today. And so this is our opportunity to try and make this a little bit better for the neighbors. And not just for the last month, because we're talking about this, but ongoing, is to say, there's got to be some improvement. There'll be some impact on the neighbors, but it, it can't be to, to the detriment, or this is our opportunity to, to say, to put some parameters around this for the long term. We do that, and we talk about Loyola. I equate this more to like a Ronald Knox, which was 2006, which was a little school that, that was a big impact on the traffic, and the size and the timing, and we made some changes there that, that took it away from the neighborhood as best we can while supporting that organization. But there's limits on what Knox, Ronald Knox can do, so.
So, we can put limitations on, as when you talk about the, the size of an operation, as long as there's a detrimental impact upon the neighboring community. When physical size, I think, would require an additional special use or variation based upon this property, I know it has in the past, so I know they would have to come back here before this board for that.
So, so, wait, let me just clarify. So, right now, you're using the whole second floor, right? So if, if, if they wanted to use the first floor, or, you know, it, or it's no longer a church, you've said, what if they buy the church? It's no longer a church, we're going to convert it into something else. They're coming in front of us.
That's, that's correct. So the, the, the underlying, the underlying special use is related to the church. Okay, there is, there is-
The whole building?
There is, there is, and this, the reason why they're, they're here before us today is because it's the non-church entity operating this use. Okay, so the church would actually be allowed to run its own daycare system. Because this is not a church-related, uh, entity, or not the church itself, while they might be partners, as they call them, they're not the church, that's why they're before us. This use would run with the use. We can make it run with the user. And if they bought out the church and that, that church use wouldn't, wouldn't exist anymore, the underlying church use, this would, it would be an expansion of the special use, and I believe they would have to come back here before us. Um, as far as, and caps, you know, we're talking about enrollment caps, the only time we've ever done an enrollment cap is if it's been agreed upon condition. I, I highly, I highly recommend not having an enrollment cap, particularly for this use, because the underlying use is a church, like we talked about church on Sundays. The capacity is based upon the fire code, so.
So, but, like, in this case, let's say, I mean, I don't know how many classrooms there are, but let's say they wanted to add five classrooms. Is that an expansion of the special use?
This would be an expansion of this special use, that's correct.
So, to, to Trustee Sullivan's concern, at least about size, physical size, we're approving a special use in this defined-
Yes, as presented today, which would be the second floor and partially, particularly the first floor, uh, with the underlying use all around it being the church. So if they wanted to come back, if, if our place comes back and says, listen, we wanted to have five more classrooms, that would be an expansion of the special use that I believe would require them to come back before this board to either A, apply for a new one, or amend this old, this old ordinance. And I think that could be expressly built into this ordinance as well.
So, I'm sorry to belabor this, but, so the concept of what they have applied for is based on what the programs they have in effect now? Is that?
It's based upon the application, which, which labels, which lists where they, they operate, how they, and what the use is. So-
Because they're, they're going to change their programs, you know, from time to time.
Yeah, I have a question on that.
Maybe they're legal. The special use is with the church?
There's an underlying special use with the church that's from 1989.
Right.
There's one existing one, and they did, they did an expansion, and-
Now, now you got me confused. Why, are we, are we giving a special use to just our place?
Yes.
Within the church that has a special use?
Yes, that's why they're here, because it's our place and not the church doing it.
Because it's a separate entity.
So I have a question. Sorry, I, I have a question. So, um, you know, you were talking about Ronald Knox, or I can't remember which one yours. So if a, if a preschool, just, you know, if we give them, they have a special use, similar to this special use, and they decide to add another, like an after-school enrichment program, an after-school enrichment program, do they have to come back for a special use?
Most likely not, depending on what the special use grant was. If the special use grant was operation from 9:00 to 3:00, and that was it, and then they operate, then the after-school program's going to be 301, then yes, they would. So it could be that limitation, the time limitation. But if they were to expand-
If I think Ronald Knox, we, we get-
Which, yeah, they might. I think Ronald Knox is the one that does have a time limitation.
Has a time limit, but not an enrollment.
But not an enrollment cap, right, so they can operate a certain-
A time limit, okay, and so, this special use, yeah.
So in this particular case, I, I don't know if a time limit's appropriate or not. I don't believe so. But the size or the, the location of where the operation is going to take place is probably appropriate to limit. And whether it's, uh, as applied for today, or there's an extra area that they need, that's up to this board. But those are the limitations that can be placed, the conditions that can be placed on, on an operation.
And that's why I'm just throwing that out there. Loyola, we put the enrollment cap on there. Ronald Knox, we put the time limit on there. How do we make sure it doesn't outgrow the neighbors, and the neighbors don't have the right to say, you know, what we're, what we're all agreeing to today, we might get to work based on the plan that was submitted, but that could change if this organization continues to, to grow, or, or change timing, or whatever.
Well, do people have thoughts on, I mean, I think you're sort of asking a question of the board, you know, what do you, what do you think? Is there, is there a thought on what would be an appropriate, um, limitation? And then I guess I would ask the applicant as well, is what sort of, you know, what's, what's a workable limitation in terms of addressing the concern that, you know, three years from now, there's triple the traffic?
Right. Well, the one thing I would, let me say this, I agree with what Corporation Council said. Your ordinance already provides, and you said this too, Mr. Village President, that an expansion of an existing special use has to come back to you. So we don't disagree with that. Um, the question is, what's considered an expansion? An expansion of what? I would suggest, and that's what I was just talking to Mr. Adler about, I think when this was submitted, and, and I'm not exactly sure how the parking variation number was calculated, but when this was submitted, it was based upon an understanding that it would be the 3,000 square feet that Jane Gallery mentioned, plus the use of the lower-level space. That was understood. So, um, I mean, that's in the materials. So I would say, you know, that's probably what the special use is, that if it got expanded to the additional classrooms you mentioned, Trustee Sullivan, or something like that, I agree, you'd have to come back. We would have to come back.
Well, and your point is that the, the parking variation is calculated, and, Mr. Adler, you can nod your head on this one, the parking variation is calculated based on the square footage of-
Correct.
-the facility being used. Is that, no, I didn't get it right, obviously, since he's coming on. Okay.
I think, if you look at how they describe the program on a daily basis, they say the 3,000 square foot second floor is being used, but what we did as staff is take a look at the lower level, if the whole space was being used, utilized at one time. Now, their program description says the lower levels used occasionally, not all the time, like the, the second floor space, but we did take the lower-level space into consideration to get to that 17-space parking variation, which would mean there's over 5,000 square foot of total space that we calculated the parking on. 3,000, it's the, the, the space that they use, that they use exclusively on the, the second floor, and then the space they share in the lower level.
And the lower level is, that's not, do we have a diagram of that? That's not the whole church, is it?
No, um, yeah, you do have a diagram.
Do we know what page, or any guess?
Do we know what page, or any guess?
It would be right after the aerial in your package, so one point...
Six fifteen.
Yes.
Six fifteen and six sixteen.
The Fellowship Hall and Club Room.
Here it is.
Seventeen. Okay, so, they use the lower level, I was thinking you mean the first floor, the basement, the portion of the basement, sort of, the first floor is where the church itself is, and then the second floor, they use part of that as well, that, that the church, the sort of higher ceiling taking up part of the sanctuary, or taking up part of the second floor. The things that are circled on, on six fifteen and on six seventeen, that's what the parking variation is based on.
If it was in color, it'd be outlined in orange, and when you look at the program And again, it says occasionally used, that lower level's occasionally used.
Trustee Pierce, thoughts?
I mean, it, it, I am comfortable with the current use, and, and, you know, in terms of the current level of operation. That, that's what I feel like I'm, you know, if I vote yes. But my, my concern is, I, I don't want that to allow the expansion, an expansion without coming back to us. And so, what, what do we, do we have to do anything to make sure that if this, and by expansion, I mean, a lot, a lot more individuals attending programs. If, if that happens, I feel they ought to come back to us. And, and I don't know how that's put into the ordinance.
Well, again, I, I would, I would caution the village in putting in an enrollment cap, as we've used that term in the past, that would be anything less than what the fire code would allow, or whatever state agency regulates this use, if they even have a state agency regulating this use. The enrollment caps that we've had in the past have all been by agreement. And unless there's an agreement here, I, I would, I would caution that we keep it by size and by the standards that we have in the fire codes. The physical expansion's obviously easy, it's outlined in the, it's, it's detailed, and it's described in the application, it's actually outlined in, in the application as well.
So, what, what if there was, what if there was a modification, so the lower level, so the upper level, it looks like you have sort of different rooms, where, you know, you've got the art room, you've got the chill room, you've got the main room, you sort of have rooms designated for programming. Am I understanding that correctly in the upper level? If, if they were to take the lower-level space that they now occasionally use, you know, put up some walls, reconfigure it, and all of a sudden, if, if there's a quiet room downstairs, and a chill room downstairs as well, would that be an expansion? I mean, I think that's the kind of expansion you're worried about. Would that be an expansion of a special use for us?
The physical change, putting up walls, would obviously require some sort of permit process through the village. We would have notification of it. Okay? We, this special use wouldn't necessarily prohibit the church from doing that for church, for church reasons, but if the sole purpose was to add another room, or another use, another classroom, I think that we can build into the ordinance that it would have to come back as an expansion of the special use. But again, we're, we're talking about two separate things here. We're not talking about just, you know, they have, the church may have their own right to get a permit and build a new classroom for the church services, or for whatever they want, but for our place itself is gonna be limited to what this application is here today. And absent some other type of, you know, restriction, as far as the physical uses and, and the layout, I, I would, again, refrain from just putting on the numbers. But the use is laid out. This, they are gonna occasionally use the first floor. That means occasionally is a defined term. Well, we could define it in the ordinance, but it's a defined term in the dictionary, right? It would, so, you know, less than, than most times.
I'm sure there's been millions of dollars spent litigating what the word occasionally means, so...
I don't understand why we'd, there's a special use with the church, we're not putting an enrollment cap on the church. We're putting a use on the, special use of our place. So, I, I guess, I don't know why the two, why you can't do that, because we have to follow what the church can do per the fire code, or whatever, enrollment cap.
Well, enrollment caps, in general, I believe, are subject to challenge. And Loyola agreed to their enrollment cap over the years. And, and that was part of the agreement. Other than that, where, where's the threshold? Is it twenty students, or what's the difference between twenty students and twenty-one students, right? The threshold is really the amount of physical, people that can physically be in a location that's still safe. That's the threshold, which is the fire code amount. So, if there's, if, if now the expanded use, let's say they add thirty students, what's that?
Do we know what the fire code allowance is for those?
Yeah, we should, absolutely. You know, what you want to... What's it?
Do we know them tonight, or no?
I, I, I don't know. Put my fire chief hat on later, but...
But that could be worked out in developing the specifics of an ordinance.
Absolutely. These are all conditions that you can place into the, these will be additional conditions that you would place, which are, you know, somewhat related to the normal conditions you would find in any special use. So, when you grant a special use, you grant it for a specific location, for a specific user, for a specific purpose. And expansions of that require the village to come back based upon our code, or, not the village, I'm sorry, the applicant to come back to the village based upon our code. So, the fact that we can fluctuate from eighty-five to ninety students may not be an expansion of the use, because everybody can safely fit into those rooms, and it has no detrimental impact upon the neighborhood.
Well, the problem is, the enrollment in this case is the right number. Because, because one student who shows up for six hours a week is not the same as one student who shows up for every session, or for one student that shows up once a month, you know, on Saturday night. I mean, one isn't one.
It's still, though, it, well, it could make a difference, so if that one student is, like, at a time that's already a peak time.
Yeah, yeah, no, I mean, and that might be, that might be, that might be the question is, what's the peak capacity? And I know we asked the question, how many, what's the max, and it depends on the needs of the students, but what, I, I guess I would ask the applicant, you know, what is sort of the reasonable maximum number of students that you have today at any one time? Because, again, I think we've all agreed that a pure, just, unique enrollment number doesn't work, because it's not like high school, or, where everybody shows up every day at the same time and does the same stuff. So, is, you have a, is there a thought in that?
There's also one thing, I want, wait. Just one thing about the board to, to realize is that whether there's one student or ninety students, it can't have an impact, we, we can limit the impacts it has on the neighborhood, meaning you still can't, you still have to follow the traffic management.
Yeah, that's what I, that's actually what I was gonna ask, is, um, isn't, don't, let's just say we decide the enrollment cap should be, that, you know, one fifty, I'm just gonna, you know, or whatever. We don't, you know, isn't the real capacity issue traffic and safety in the alley? That's the real issue here. We can put all these, you know, we don't, if they decide they want to do something to change this fellowship room and paint it, or whatever they might want to do, but the real issue is making sure that it's safe in the alley, and that, and there's no traffic issues. And we already said we're putting in a condition that the traffic study has to work. And so, I'm, I'm confused why we think an enrollment is gonna help that, because I do think they could put an enrollment cap of fifty people, but if they, you know, if they all show up at a different time, you know, it's not gonna matter. What's mattering is if all fifty of them show up at six o'clock, that's a problem. And so, the real cap is based on the traffic plan. And maybe that's, they could...
Which is, which is consistent with Loyola. That's why the cap was desired, because of traffic. Traffic is the issue. Traffic and impact on the neighbors is the issue, not how many people are inside the building. You're correct on that. Yeah, I think you make some great points, trustee Dodd. I was thinking of it a little bit differently, that, you know, to ask perhaps of Mr. Lemon, what were the assumptions of the, of the enrollment to inform the, the plan? And is there any bandwidth, what, what do you think the bandwidth would be for enrollment to go up, and the, the plan still be, still be, you know, executable and good for the neighborhood? So, I mean, I think we're kind of zeroing in on the same thought, just from different, different angles, but...
Very good question.
But I, I'm wondering if somebody from Kimberly Horn or our staff can, can speak to that.
Peter Lemon with Kimberly Horn. I don't know what that threshold is in terms of what the enrollment is until you get to a certain level of congestion, right, in the alley. You, you're either able to handle it, or you're not. And so, we've talked about, you know, creating a staggered pickup time, right? And, and, you know, they have, basically, people are picked up by six o'clock, or maybe just after six o'clock, but sometimes that doesn't mean that everyone comes right at six o'clock. Some people are coming at five forty-five. So, it all kind of depends on that part of it. So, we didn't really look at kind of a traditional traffic study, where you said if you're gonna build an office building, or a restaurant, you look at how much traffic you might generate based on how big that is. We didn't say, all right, you have this many trips. We didn't do, like, the capacity analysis of intersections. It's really, was there issues with the alley being blocked or not being blocked? So, if you were to, you know, increase enrollment, I would suspect you would start to have increasing people showing up to pick people up. At some point, you know, you start to have a problem where you can't process those, that many people. What that number is, I don't know. And it depends on, you know, whether they're showing up at the same time during pickup, whether they're being spread out more in advance of six o'clock. It's really hard to say on what that, that number is. I don't know.
That's, that's fair. But is, is it also fair to say that the plan was, really had the current population as, as its assumptions?
Based on its current, on how it's currently loaded, if you will, how the facility's currently loaded.
Does the potential of, for example, the, the cutout, in your, your opinion, although you're reacting to not having this for very long, I recognize that, does that add potential capacity, or is that just a reconfiguration?
No, it would add capacity in the sense that you would no longer be having buses in the alley, and instead of those spaces that are reserved for buses until the buses are done picking up, those spaces would be available for family pickups instead. So, in that, in that regard, removing those buses and using those spaces for more family pickups would, would be an option.
So, I guess we don't know. I guess my takeaway is, we don't know for sure whether the, the management plan that's proposed could handle expansion. It could, potentially, but we, but we don't, but we don't know.
And to some extent, the question is, can you make it, again, sort of, a continued effective management of traffic? Is that enough, trustee Pierce, to sort of, insulate, like, look, when, once you can't manage, once you can't manage the traffic, then you're too big. You know, I don't, I mean...
Or if traffic is an issue, we're allowed to look at it again, because they're not complying with successful traffic. So, I, I'm, I thought your point was excellent, and, you know, I, I think that satisfies my concern right now.
So, well, so, from an enforcement...
I'm still confused now, because, and I agree with trustee Dodd.
Maybe that's all we do, is monitor the traffic. But...
Yeah.
You said, Mr. Stein, we shouldn't enforce, or, an enrollment cap isn't enforceable.
Correct.
Loyola agreed to it.
Yes.
But if Loyola came back and said, we don't want to do this, we want to go up to our fire code, is, how can, why can, because we're managing our traffic. So, the, the two aren't, we're not being consistent.
No, you are, you are being consistent, because part of the negotiation, and part of the deal that was made with the special use for Loyola, to get those relief, to get that relief, was an agreement that they would...
Yeah, they offered that. I agree.
They offered that. So, by having that agreement...
Are we setting ourselves up if they're not enforceable?
No, because it's in the ordinance as an agreement. It's laid out specifically as an agreement.
It's more enforceable if there's an agreement.
Right. There's a difference between, there's a difference between enforcement of an ordinance and enforcement of an agreement.
And they came up with that agreement, because they wanted to get whatever they, you know...
So, in this situation, and that's an easier threshold to meet and figure out, as opposed to this particular case, because you don't know what the moment is at a given time.
If, if I can supplement Jeff's comment, since I was the principal author of the Loyola ordinance, that was a condition that Loyola volunteered...
Not the most recent one, though, back when I was...
The one that created the enrollment cap was a condition that they volunteered as a proxy for not having too much traffic going in and out, and the village accepted it. The, the problem with putting enrollment caps, obviously, as Jeff pointed out, if this was being run by the church itself, this would be part of its religious ministry, we wouldn't even be having this discussion, and there would be religious liberty issues if we were trying to limit that aspect of it. Here, we have a, a separate not-for-profit, essentially licensed by the church to use its space. But the problem with putting a cap of any number of people is, let's say you had a cap of thirty-five individuals on the facility at any given time, when person who's legally protected with a disability, number thirty-six, is denied access, even though it has no adverse impact on the neighbors, even though it has no adverse, no material adverse impact on train, on traffic, we violated those persons' rights under the ADA, and that's, that's problematic. So, that, I, I think is kind of a different way of looking at the problem with the cap that Jeff just mentioned. I think what trustee Dodd and Kersman have suggested, along with Mr. Adler, is that the identified areas that the applicant themselves identify, the physical space that they're limited to, combined with the traffic plan, would be effective proxies for a hard enrollment cap that might adversely impact one person. But the traffic plan is clearly linked to mitigating any adverse impact on the surrounding property owners, and the physical space identified by the applicant themselves is, is itself a, a temporal limitation on how much they can do, and how many people they can have. So, that would be a safer harbor than going with a, an actual hard cap on people.
Trustee Plonkin?
I have a question, back to you.
Wait, let me, I'm sorry, let me interrupt. Okay, so, it's eleven thirty-one, under the board's rules, we need a motion to continue the meeting beyond eleven thirty. So, I, can I be optimistic and suggest that I would entertain a motion to continue the meeting till twelve midnight?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, so the meeting...
Why don't you continue the debate, Jeff?
You'd like to vote, no?
So, all right, so trustee Plonkin, I'm sorry, I interrupted you to continue the meeting.
So, there's a lot of talk about the traffic plan, and are we following the traffic plan, or violating the traffic plan? What, is there a specific traffic plan? I mean, we have suggestions by Kimberly Horn, we have...
I, I think the plan is the, the one that, that Mr. Frank sent to us. What page is it on? It's not the traffic study, it's the plan.
I think it's seven twenty-three.
I was gonna say, it starts on... I think it starts on page eight thirty of the material, right? It was, that's the addendum that was sent to us.
Yeah, it was like recently sent, right, yes, this is...
Actually...
Actually, it might start earlier.
Maybe it starts earlier.
Right, so his letter, his cover letter is eight seventeen.
Yeah.
Sent August twenty-third.
His letter starts on page eight seventeen, you're right.
Seventeen, okay.
Right, and so, there's the general principles that are at the beginning of the plan. This is their plan. No vehicles stopped or standing in the alley, pace buses can't block the alley, no vehicles backing up a woman at half, and reduced parking enforced at half. I mean, that seems like, you know, look, I don't think anybody's looking for perfection, but that seems like those are the measures.
And is that something that, I mean, it's obviously in these materials, but if someone wanted to see what the traffic plan is, like, where would that be? You know, if, if it's a condition of our ordinance that it's in the traffic plan, is that, where would, where would one find the traffic plan, other than going back through here?
Well, could be part of the ordinance, or how does that work?
Could be part of the ordinance. The engineering department would probably also have a copy of it, as well as community development, and maybe even the police department, but we can absolutely make this part of the ordinance. But, again, one of the things that you can do as a condition is just have an ends, not the means, right? And I think these four criteria list what the ends are. How we get there is up to the engineers and, and, and the church itself, and the, and the, you know, participants. How we get there is up to the engineers and the church itself and the, you know, participants. But our conditions could very well be simple. Doesn't have to follow a specific, this plan, but they can follow these four very, you know, conclusory.
Ideas, yeah. I mean, we can incorporate the general principles of our places. Does this have a title? Is it Parking Management, Our Place Traffic and Parking Management Plan, dated August 2018? Because I think to Trustee Dodd's point and Trustee Kersman's point, if this is happening regularly, do we care how many people are in the building at the moment?
For not blocking the alley.
Right, other than the fire code, I understand. If not blocking the alley, if the buses aren't blocking the alley, if the cars aren't backing up on Womat Ave, that's, those are the big concerns that people have.
I mean, there's only one other concern that I felt like a couple of the neighbors were worried about was just safety in the alley a little bit. And I did wonder, I mean, obviously, an alley is a thoroughfare. I mean, I've spoke to our legal counsel about that. But I did wonder if we could make a recommendation to put a speed limit sign in the alley or would that be helpful?
All alleys throughout the village are 15 mile per hour.
I know. Actually, I thought I, but I don't, but people might not know that and would that help? I was just suggesting that.
You can do it, engineers. I mean, it wouldn't be, doing so would not necessarily be part of this ordinance. It'd be the village board's own.
But if somebody were speeding in the alley, then, then the police could be there and give them a ticket. They could give them a ticket anyways, but I was just.
No, I'm saying, what I'm saying is the board can absolutely say, designate that the sign be put there. It's just would not necessarily be a condition placed on a special use.
Right, right. It's not, it's not part.
It's our own advancement over.
It's an action that we could take.
Right.
As a village, not even the village board, the village manager could do that.
As opposed to being part of the ordinance, I think is what Mr. Stein is saying.
I was just saying that in addition to blocking, the things that you outlined in terms of blocking the alley, making sure the pace buses aren't there, cars can get through, I think the other is just safety of cars going down the alley.
And as we actively manage this, Dan and his department, if we conclude that either speed's an issue in the alley, we can look at either traffic calming or signage, or just warning signage about people being dropped off. The village can do that. It's just aluminum and paint. It's not a big stretch for us.
Okay, so.
Hours of operation, I mean, put limits on that. I mean, it's, right now, if I heard it's nine to six, or if they had a program.
But there's a Saturday evening program as well.
There's a Saturday evening, but, you know, if they, or they go six to nine P.M. I mean, that's where I get worried that, forget the enrollment cap, but it just is all the time and it's going to be more impact to the neighbors. So.
And is that part of the, is that part of the special use that's approved today, their current programming hours or not?
It would, yeah, it would be essentially how, exactly how they laid out their application unless we expressly call it out differently in the ordinance. So, if we say, because the ordinance will say it's approved as applied for and here are the additional conditions or here are the additional, here's the additional relief.
And where's that, where is what they applied for in here?
It starts at 5:50, it looks like.
5:50. But is the Saturday night really the problem or is it the peak hours of the weekday?
Well, I think it's, obviously, whatever, there's a problem, which I think is being addressed by the traffic. But if they decide to, again, have a 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m., that could become a problem. It might not, may have no impact. It might get one person. The neighbors would never know. It could be, you know, six to nine o'clock at night, Monday through Friday. That's going to change the neighborhood. That's going to be a more active building than what I think these neighbors signed up for or know today.
That would be considered an expansion.
Can I ask the applicant what their application had in it? Can I ask, what did your application have in it describing the program, the programming?
It says the 48 hours per week, nine hours, sorry. It says the 48 hours per week, nine hours every weekday and three hours on Saturday. In the description of our program, it's got the sessions, nine to 12, 12 to 3, 3 to 6.
So, that's nine hours, oh, I did the math wrong. Five plus how much on the weekend?
Just three hours on Saturday, six to nine.
Forty-eight, okay.
They changed those times. They come before the board. They decided rather than going from nine to six, they go seven to.
That's a. Yeah, it would be an alteration of the special use. So, yeah, they would have to apply for a change.
And what if they had a special event that was like a one-time thing?
Well, I think that would, that would fall under a different section of our code where they can apply for a special event to the extent that they need.
Just like any other group.
Just like any other use or restaurant other than liquor licenses, I guess.
Okay.
What I was going to suggest, and I'm talking and thinking at the same time, which could be dangerous, but I was going to actually say, suggest, but Trustee will beat me to the punch. I think a lot of it is in the drafting of the ordinance, which has yet to happen and that some of these concerns could be addressed by the language and how it's addressed. And if I would combine that notion, which I think is a good notion with what Trustee Dodd was saying, is at the end of the day, it really comes down to traffic. I think really what you're talking about is not only tailoring the special use to what, you know, was the program that Mr. Adler referred to that was the basis for the application, but really trying to determine what is expansion. As I said, your ordinance already says an expansion of a special use has to come back before you, as you said before. But what does that really mean? And I'm sure there are certain things that everybody would agree is a change, but it's not really an expansion. And then there are other things that some of you have identified where you'd say, that's an expansion. And so, ultimately, maybe it's the drafting of the language that says if somebody, if an application is made, as Mr. Stein said before, for a building permit, to do something that somebody, maybe the community development director in concert with the village engineer, would have to get to that question of analyzing, well, is this going to really materially impact the traffic or the implementation of the traffic plan? We're going to make a determination that's an expansion. But maybe we're able to say, because it's not going to, we don't see what you're asking for as having any impact on the executable, the ability to execute the traffic plan or the traffic itself, they could make a determination, this is not an expansion. And sort of what you do like on a PUD, I think, I'm sure your ordinance has a provision that says X, Y, and Z are considered major amendments to a plan development. You got to go back through the process. And anything that's not considered major is minor. Something like that. It's just a thought.
I mean, Mr. Frank is absolutely correct. We could build those conditions into the, we can make the ordinance the way we want to have a condition. It doesn't have to follow a specific formula with the certain limitations that I laid out that I think would be problematic. So, if we felt that the hours of use, that any change of those would be considered an expansion of the use, you can put that in the ordinance and say that.
Well, I mean, I might clarify.
You can.
It seems like an expansion of the hours during the week, because it's already basically nine to six, you know, would be relatively material. You know, you could say, well, I could shift the hours to seven to four. But seven, traffic in an alley and on Womat Ave at seven o'clock is different than traffic at nine o'clock because of everybody going to work and the like. And after six o'clock, you know, you're also now introducing sort of, you know, an evening function. And I guess if you have no plans to expand beyond nine to six, I'd be, I guess I would ask the question is, would that give you comfort if you said Monday through Friday, nine to six is what are operations? Saturday, you know, three hours, I'm not sure doing a three-hour Sunday morning program is going to cause anybody heartburn. But it seems like the weekday would be, where you're already sort of at full hours would be something that you would be concerned about. And I saw a nodding of the heads from Our Place themselves.
Yes. I'm not sure what I just agreed to, but.
Well, basically, what I was suggesting is an expansion of hours during the week would be considered an expansion of the special use.
The point is just to ask a question because, again, it's percolated up to us to help solve the problem, make it better for Our Place, make it better for the neighbors. If their operation is what it is today and operating at the times and they make this traffic less of an impact to the neighbors, I'm okay with that. But, you know, and to Trustee Dodd's point, if they change their hours for whatever reason and it becomes a more of a traffic issue with the neighbors, they're back here and we're in front of them.
Or, for example, you know, a 24-hour thing. A 24-hour a day type thing would be a very different use.
Well, and I think there's a difference.
That's all I want to make sure is we at least, and this is a very select, I mean, this is only a few neighbors. You know, you can see it. I mean, and I'm sure it's not easy for the neighbors to come up here because it's the ones that drug them impact. It's not the people necessarily across the street or blocks away like we would notice in other special uses. Like, we talk about Loyola and Ronald Knox. I mean, those were neighborhoods. I mean, there were multiple streets. This is just, I think, 11 homes, you know, on that alley. So, you know, and it's not easy for them because I'm sure they're very supportive of Our Place. And it sounds like it's a collaborative effort. So, let's make what we have today, let's make it right. Hopefully, you know, if it continues to grow or whatever it is, because somebody came up and said it's going to grow, grow, be successful as a charitable organization, just don't make it, don't, let's not, two years from now or a year from now, make it, these neighbors sitting there going, we're back at this again and we have no rights.
Yeah, I was going to say too, hours are a good thing, but what if enrollment doubles? You're going to have twice as many people dropped off.
But the point I think that was made, as long as the traffic plan is met, even if they can handle that.
However, they are able to meet the traffic.
Yeah, if they can handle that, then who, doesn't matter if it doubles or triples. If it adds one and they can't handle it, then that would be a problem.
Exactly. Now, that sounds reasonable to me.
So, do we want to, so I guess the question, so we're back to what the question was originally. What do we want to include in the ordinance as conditions? I think, I think we're in agreement that, you know, the use requires a continued effective implementation of a traffic management plan. And to that end, we're going to have a six-month look back with the village engineer sort of giving an immediate opinion of whether it's working or not. And then it sound, I mean, do we want to, do we want to add, I think that, I think we're all in agreement on that, right? That's, the other question is, do you want to add some other definition of what, and we all, let me back up. We all understand that an expansion of the special use would require them to come back to us. Do we want to add any guidance in the ordinance? Because we're the policy setters as the board. Any guidance in the ordinance of what an expansion, what we would define an expansion as? Like increasing in hours?
I just, are we, we should. I wouldn't want to limit yourself to, if you define expansion, then you have.
I think it would be what's in addition to. What's in addition to what would otherwise be known as an expansion? Or what do you automatically, you know, again, not limited to, declare to be an expansion of a use? That would otherwise not normally be considered one.
I think you do.
Yeah, I do. And I don't want to speak.
I agree with Trustee Sullivan. I mean, I agree with Trustee Sullivan. In fairness to the neighbors here, you know, they expect that the program is running from nine to six and on Saturday evenings. And so, I would, I think an expansion of those hours would require them to come back in front of the board. Because I think, because they could expand the program to six tonight at night. So, it could go from six in the, you know, nine, excuse me, their current hours, I think, are nine to six. So, they could go from nine to nine. And it would, they could probably still be okay with the traffic plan, potentially. But there's, but that is increasing more traffic in totality in the alley. And that, and so, to me, that's, maybe we decide that's okay, but.
Well, and look, I'm not, I'm not as concerned, and I don't know if it would be an expansion of the special use if they decided to have a Sunday morning, nine to noon, you know, session. Like, is that something we would get? But definitely.
The neighbors could be concerned about that nine to noon on a Sunday because there's, that happens to be when church is there. I mean.
Right, okay, so that might not work.
So, that's why I think.
Or whatever, you know, I'm not as, I guess I'm not as concerned about a three-hour add on the weekend, whereas a three-hour add during the week would be very material. So, I guess I look to, I look for some guidance from the applicant on what you think is a reasonable set of limitations on you. And then we can decide whether we sort of agree with what you think is reasonable limitations.
I also, before, I mean, I don't want to be just, and say we can add a three hours on a weekend isn't that bad because I, it would have an impact.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it does have an impact. It's a change. You know, these neighbors, Monday through Friday, assuming they work Monday through Friday, they're.
Right, that's a good point. That's a good point. People are out and about more on Saturday and Sunday, yeah.
But, you know, in terms of the nine to six, I mean, they talked about the staggered plan, you know? Maybe having extra time and fewer buses and cars going through at once is actually better. So, I mean, there is a lot of, you know, you add an extra half an hour, you add an hour and you stagger the time. I don't know that that's what they want to do, but, you know, stagger types were considered.
One of the things to keep in mind is that you're putting limitations on now, that doesn't mean they can't be changed. So, if nine to six does not work and they find out, Our Place finds out a year from now, we want to go to nine to eight, then they can present evidence back to us and give notice back to the neighbors to find out what the additional impacts, if any, would be. But, right now, you know what the hours are right now. That's, I guess that's my point.
We're throwing out a lot of ideas.
Yes.
Well, I do trust, Trustee Stein, or Trustee Stein.
Wow.
I'm not voting past midnight.
At least you should call me Trustee.
Mr. Stein, to draft something, sorry. How are we going to vote on something? What are we going to vote on tonight?
Yeah, but that's a question. I mean, do we want that policy decision or do we want to let, you know, Mr. Frank come back to Mr. Stein and say, okay, this is what we would suggest, a, some definitions of an expansion of a special use. And are we delegating that to basically him and me then to agree on it? Because I got to sign it.
Well, don't forget it comes back, it'll come back.
It comes back to us.
Approval. It's counted as recommended approval.
It won't come back.
Well, that would not come back.
So, if you're willing, if the board is willing to say, Mr. Frank and Mr. Stein figure out some definition around expansion of a special use and it not come back to us, we can certainly do that. Or if we would like to add our guidance to it, we can do that as well, right?
Yes, I think you, I think there's a lot of guidance here.
Mr. Frank standing up though.
I would just say to simplify it a little bit, first of all, following up on what Trustee Dodd just said, I don't think Our Place would have a problem putting in the ordinance that it's considered an expansion if the hours change that you just described.
I, that satisfies me. Does that satisfy you?
The second thing that was discussed, which Our Place wouldn't have a problem with, is the application was based on the square footage that Mr. Adler talked about. And an expansion beyond that space for programming, which I think would address Trustee Pierce's comments, that would be also agreed as deemed an expansion.
You guys want to give me a nod here if that's sort of works.
That sounds really good to me.
Yeah, all right. All right, so. So, I believe what our, the amendment will need to include.
Excuse me, Mr. President, I hate to interrupt.
You cannot address the board again. I'm sorry, sir.
But you're talking about an expansion of the use. They are expanding the amount of space from 3,000 feet to 5,000 feet right now. So, they're expanding the footprint and the capacity right now beyond what they're presently serving. It's not something that might happen in the future. It's happening right now.
My understanding is that the programming is on the second floor and the first floor is for occasional use. Is that accurate?
The lower level that we use occasionally, one of the reasons, you know, one of our goals was we need to get handicap bathrooms in so that that can be done in the lower level. There's no room to do that on the second floor. So, that's when we were talking to the community development department and came up with this 5,000 square feet, it was that we would like to use the lower level space more frequently. That does not mean we would bring more people in to use the space. It just means that we would be able to use that space differently. And one of the big goals is to get handicap accessible bathrooms into the, into the building. And then to renovate, we asked for, you know, part of the permit was to renovate. So, to renovate the kitchen, which we use now. So, again, it's not to allow us to expand the program. It's to allow us different uses of space for the current program.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so, my understanding of what we, what the amendment would need would be the use is conditioned on continued effective implementation of a traffic management plan. There will be a six-month look. There will be a six-month look back with the village engineer to assess the effectiveness of the traffic implementation, implementation plan. The definition of an expansion of the special use will include, but not be limited to, a change in the hours or a change in the physical space being used. Is that, I get it right?
For programming.
For programming, right.
From the six months, just so, so it's a six-month...
That's actually more limiting, Mr. Frank, the changing, changing the physical space for programming.
Right.
Yes, so just...
That would be needed.
Right, okay.
The six-month look back is, starts, we sign the ordinance, let's say, mid-September or whatever, September, March, end of March, April, we're looking back at the last six months.
Yeah, it'll, the six months will begin upon the execution of the ordinance. There's no reason to, to...
So which mean, yeah, so September 25th.
So March, yeah, you're right.
No, 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 actually, we'll sign, we'll sign, we're not going to, we'll sign the ordinance as soon as they agree to the language, because it's not coming back.
Oh, I got that. I'm just trying to make sure we capture, we don't capture, we don't six-month look back and take the summer.
No, 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 so it's, you know, October, November, December, January, February, March. And it...
Right? Okay, that's what you just said, sorry.
The, the assessment by the village engineer for this six-month period, what's the ability of neighbors to have input on that?
Well, I think, I, I, my recommendation would be that community, that they stay in touch with community development and that, you know, at their request, certainly, community development and the, and the engineer can meet with them to hear the issues. I think that should take place prior to the assessment.
Right.
So we can, I don't know if we need to condition the ordinance in that, because that's just staff, tell the staff they should meet with the neighbors before.
But it's our understanding that that's what we envision.
Well, what I would suggest is that we do the six-month look back. During that time, you know, the village engineer and Peter can assess the situation to see if it's working in their opinion with the neighborhood feedback. If it's not, then we should probably give Dan and Peter some authority to change the plan or to have the plan changed. And then we can talk about, if none of that works, then that, that cutout that Mr. Frank submitted today, I will match. So, I mean, we can build all that into the ordinance now, so we don't have to come back to this board in six months or eight months or nine months and, of course, with the agreement, you know, with the applicant on that, otherwise we could mandate that it does come back. Either way, it's up to this board.
I mean, I'm, I'm comfortable with staff sort of managing this to a point, you know, you know, the tweak this, the tweak that, the move this, the move that. And I, I mean, I think I can rely on staff, I mean, me personally, I can rely on staff to sort of know when they think the issue's been elevated to the point where they think the board needs to get involved. Is that, Mr. Frenzer, is that...
Yes.
Okay?
Yes.
So I don't, I don't necessarily, I, I think the thought was in six months, the engineer looks, and in the interim, there is some conversation between community development and engineering, but the engineer looks, assesses it, and if it's okay, then it's smooth sailing until it's not okay, you know? And I think, I think, I think, you know, I mean, we often have these issues where everybody's worried about what's going to happen and it, and it works out. So that's why I think we're all sort of hopeful that the village engineer comes back in six months and says, "Sure enough, they're doing what they said they were going to do, and it's working." Nobody wants to be back trying to figure it out. Or there's a couple of tweaks, whatever. But we'll get to the six, we'll get to March when we get to March. All right, so do I, I articulated the items that need to be, can I get, can I get a motion? Do I, actually, do I need that from Trustee Pierce, since he made the original motion?
It should be the amendment to his motion, yes. As long as he agrees with those amendments, then the second can agree as well.
So I, I agree to the amendment.
There you go.
Okay, so is that...
Do we, do we need to recite it again, or...
I believe the president cited, recited them.
Okay, no, I'm, I'm in favor of the amendment.
Okay, and is the second in favor of the amendment? Okay, all right, so we don't need to vote.
No, that's the motion on the table.
Okay, so that's the motion on the table. All right, discussion, to the extent we need to have more discussion. Well, actually, it's 11:59, so I don't have to interrupt. Can we have 15 more minutes? Is that okay? I'd entertain a motion to take this to 12:15.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so the motion carries, the meeting will continue until 12:15 PM. Does anybody want to take the lead, or you want me to? I'll try and be brief for a change. I'll start. So first off, thank you to everybody who's here. Thank you for being engaged in the process. It's clear that this is a great program, but I also want to reiterate what Trustee Sullivan said, the neighbors are not bad people for being concerned about their neighborhood, okay? And these are very reasonable concerns about traffic and the like, but honestly, they're no different than the concerns that we face all the time when we have a residential property that abuts an institutional property or a property of more activity or intensity. It happens on our commercial districts, it happens on our parks, it happens on our churches, it happens on our schools. I think that our place is taking great strides, and as Mr. Frank said at the beginning, oftentimes when we go through these processes, we end up with a better situation afterwards. I believe they do have a responsibility to manage the traffic as well as they can. And whether that's good enough or not, we'll see. It's my judgment that the plan, as it's being implemented, will hopefully work, but the engineer will validate that. I do think that the neighbors should feel free to reach out to the village to keep us informed of what's happening, and I do think at some point in time, a formal meeting between community development, the engineering department, the police department, and the neighbors should take place over the next six months. But look, I do, I, I understand the concerns. I think this is a reasonable accommodation for the site, and I think we've also acted here tonight to put some guardrails on it, you know, to say that this can't, you know, we can't have 24-hour-a-day, 1,000 kids at a time, you know, and, and, you know, we're, we're now running all sorts of multiple programs out here. So I think the idea is, what's happening today, make it work, and if it doesn't work, we're going to be talking about it some more, but I can support the request.
Well, I'm trying to be as brief as possible since...
That was pretty brief for me.
It was. You know, and it is unfortunate, I'll joke in a second, discussing this after sitting here for five hours, and, because this is an important, this was one of the more important discussions that we've had, and I know I'm really a little fatigued, but I think we've come up with a, a good solution for where the program is. I think it was good messaging, good discussion that's had with the neighborhoods, maybe a little bit long overdue. I do have a lot of concerns that maybe we haven't addressed, you know, or where our place is, is, this building might not be the long-term solution. So I worry about that kind of, and when do they outgrow that, or, but that's up to them to decide and manage. And I think as much as we're going to draft this ordinance, as good as, as what our place is delivering to the people that they serve, we also have to deliver to the neighbors, especially the direct neighbors. And so there's, you know, my, my expectation is you take what you've heard tonight and minimize this impact on the, on the neighbors that you've heard from and, and continue doing all the good work that you're doing, which I think the community really supports, but my hope is that you minimize it to some of the folks that have expressed concerns, and it's followed up. And so we, we do have to watch that, and so, but I still can support the special use as it is presented today and where they are today. Trustee Pierce?
I'll support this as well. I think we've spent a good amount of time trying to speak to concerns raised by neighbors. I think the, I don't want to say tension, but when you live next to, whether it's a church or a commercial establishment, there's always, there's always going to be challenges, no matter what restrictions or conditions we have. And I know this area well, and our place is a fantastic asset for our community, and I'm, you know, anxious that, to try and help this work. I share Trustee Sullivan's comment about, long-term is this the location for them, but right now, I really want to make it work. And, yeah, so I'll, I'll support this.
Trustee Kersman?
Yeah, I can support this. I'm less enthused about the added restriction on, on time and hours, but I, I appreciate my colleague's perspective with it, on it, and I'm, I'm going to go, go along with that. I deeply admire the mission of the organization and would want to have them have as much latitude as possible for innovative programming, that community-based programming is what it's about. So, you know, potentially restricting that, you know, it's not, not ideal, but on balance with the neighbors' concerns, I think it's, I think it's fair and to it, as it has been spoken, it can be revisited. So I, I plan to go along with, with, with that limitation as well, or condition, I should say. I think this is a case of everyone doing what they're supposed to be doing. You know, children and adults, excuse me, adults getting services, families having support in the community, neighbors expressing concern about the safety of their kids, engineers coming up with ideas, village board evaluating it all. I think our community is, is, is doing it appropriately, and I'm looking forward to seeing how the, the execution of the plan goes, and, you know, I will be in support of, of this, this proposal.
Trustee Plunkett?
Sure.
You looked at me, sorry.
We're all coming up, right? I can support this proposal as well. I was very impressed by how the meeting went, and it seemed like there are very concrete improvements that are being made and will continue to be made. I was really impressed by the responsiveness of pace, and I, it sounds like that will continue, and this just seemed like a very practical, you know, let's get down to figuring out how to make this work. And so I really hope that what we're voting on tonight is something that is going to make this work, because it's a fabulous asset to the community.
Trustee Wolf?
I made eye contact with...
You can abbreviate your comments as much as you'd like.
No, I will be brief. I, I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I think this is an amazing program that is a great asset to the community and is something that seems to be very much needed as evidenced by the growth of it and the success of it. And I, I'm very happy with what we've come up with tonight, and especially the fact that there are some ways of checking in to make sure everything is working, so I would definitely support it.
Trustee Dodd?
I too want to thank everybody for coming and for all of you who are still here. I do want to reiterate what Trustee Sullivan said, which is I want to appreciate those neighbors who are most impacted by it. It is hard to come in front of the board, and we recognize that this is a small number of neighbors that are affected by this, so... And then I've said this, and I agree with everything all the other trustees have said, so I'm going to be brief, but I've said this in other land use cases that we've had in front of us, and I think what's most important is that the dialogue between the neighbors and our place continues, that it doesn't have to end tonight, and that it continues. And so I think that's what being a good neighbor is all about. And so I would encourage the neighbors to feel very comfortable doing that, and I would encourage our place to continue to reach out to the neighbors, and even to acknowledge when something's not working. So I think that's really important. And then finally, I'd say, to those of you who are still in the room, this is, and those of you who have said you have a child who goes to our place, you have some responsibility in this too. If you don't understand the traffic plan, you need to understand the traffic plan, and you need to recognize the impact this has on the neighbors and the community. And if we don't, and if you don't, then I think unfortunately, we're going to be back in front of this group in another six months. And so I would just really encourage those of you who spoke very strongly about your program and about the Our Place program, and which I think you heard all of us trustees agree with, but it is a responsibility of everybody here, the neighbors, our place, and those of you who have students or adults who take programming there. Thank you.
Okay, any further comments from any of the trustees? Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the role on the motion.
Trustee, Trustee Wolf.
And once again, a vote of...
So, yeah, so this, this one came with a positive recommendation, we're just simply voting a affirmative vote is a vote to approve the request.
Great, thank you.
Trustee Wolf?
Aye.
Trustee Sullivan?
Aye.
Trustee Plunkett?
Aye.
Trustee Dodd?
Aye.
Trustee Kersman?
Aye.
Trustee Pierce?
Aye.
President Blinsky?
Aye. As the motion carries, the request has been granted. Back to Trustee Pierce.
That concludes land use.
Okay, Finance Committee, Trustee Sullivan.
All items were approved on consent.
Administration Committee, Trustee Dodd.
All items on consent.
Municipal Services Committee, Trustee Wolf.
No report.
Public Safety Committee, Trustee Kersman.
No report.
Judiciary Committee, Trustee Plunkett.
All items covered on consent.
There are no reports from our special committees. Item seven is new business, and there's no additional new business to discuss. I will now return to item two, public comment. During public comment, we ask if there's any member of the audience who would like to address the board on an item which is not on the agenda. Is there any member of the audience who would like to address the board on an item which is not on tonight's agenda? May I see a show of hands? Okay, we'll move on to item eight, which is adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.